All right, as Chairman of the Community Redevelopment Agency, I'd like to call today's meeting to order Monday, February 6, 2012. And as is customary and required, at this time, I am asking all Board members to disclose any ownership or control of interest directly or indirectly of property in the CRA.
I currently am a resident of the CRA.
I currently am, as well. Did Mr. Townsend move? All right, your disclaimer, CRA disclaimer.
Yes.
Okay, all three members have properly filed their disclosure. Okay. Now, Item C, I am happy to provide an update regarding CRA staffing. That was an agenda item that was listed last week. And I think that we, as an agency, we as a governing body and the citizens of Pensacola are very fortunate to have appointed by the mayor our new CRA administrator, Ryan Winterberg-Lipp. Some of you already have interacted with Ryan, as she has been in the agency, has been helping in several ways already on the fifth floor, so she is a familiar face. But what you may not be familiar with is Ryan's stellar educational accomplishments. And even though I did graduate from a school down the street, from University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, I can say that Ryan brings to us a tremendous list of credentials, including the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, Florida State, as well as University of Florida. Her regional planning, urban planning, and neighborhood work, service work, provides a combination that I think is an ideal mix for the city of Pensacola, most particularly the neighborhoods that are in the CRA. And I invite all of you to contact Ryan so that you may individually meet with her and get to know her better. But at this time, I am going to invite Ryan to offer a few words. And if you have questions, again, I prefer that that be done not in this meeting format, but later on an individual basis. Ryan?
Thank you, Chairman. Can everyone hear me? Okay, it's a pleasure to see you all here today. Like Chairman Spencer said, my name is Ryan Winterberg-Lipp, and I am a Pensacola native. Like he mentioned, went to Florida State University for undergrad and UNC Chapel Hill for grad school. I also interned with the CRA back in 2006 and 2007, so some of you may know me from that. And I recently rejoined the city of Pensacola back in 2010 after working for the University of North Carolina, doing research for the Center for Sustainable Community Design. So I've been here for about 18 months, and I'm excited to be joining the CRA, returning back to the downtown, and pleasure to meet you all and work with you.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, everyone, on Item D, the only action item, is our two-part, the minutes of our two-part meeting, that being the January 9 event as well, then continued January 11, and that minutes has been recorded by staff. They used the, basically, the recording in order to recreate that minutes. And do I have, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the CRA Board meeting minutes as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, I took the liberty to put three discussion items on today's agenda. I don't intend at all for this to be a lengthy meeting. However, I did feel that it was important for us to get an update, some of you may call it a primer or a reminder, of the, basically, the financial picture, excuse the pun, of the 30,000-foot view, but Dick Barker, I invited him to provide us some information. Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the CRA. The Chairman did ask me to review with the CRA, the finances of CRA, and where we are looking in the future. And basically, although revenues from the property tax has declined since we went through the whole process of the building of the community maritime park, issuing the bonds, and then looking at the obligation we had of the $1.3 million for the wastewater treatment plant, which comes on board in fiscal year 13, along with the CRA having to use resources of its own in order to start paying the debt. Up to this point, we have paid interest on the bonds through capitalized interest during the construction period that we borrowed. So fiscal '13 will be the first year that you'll have the wastewater treatment plant payment, and you'll have the payment coming out of your resources for the maritime park bonds. But as I presented at that time several years ago, is that we would begin putting funds aside in order to have funds in order to support those payments and carry on the current operating of the CRA. So through the new market tax credit program, I am projecting that we're on target. There are no additional funds for projects, as I reported to the CRA and the City Council at the time, once we did the maritime park project, that was going to be it, along with the funding for the wastewater treatment plant. Now, right now, I'm projecting that your landscape maintenance contract with the city, community policing contract with the city, and the other contracts that you have with the city, that those can be paid. Of course, projecting out to 2017 is a long period of time, but that's what the analysis shows currently as we move forward. But there is no additional funds from '13 forward for project money. Now, as far as we closed out fiscal year 11, fiscal year 12, as you know, there was an item that came before this board last time concerning a loan to the maritime park for the building of the Back of the Stage, and $500,000 of that was coming from carryover money from fiscal year 11. So those funds, you know, are set aside now for that. And there is approximately a balance of somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000 of those funds. I know that CRA member Pratt had asked concerning the two-waying and all that. I did go back and look, and all those particular projects of the two-waying and all that, that money was set aside for those in addition to that. But any new money coming into the CRA is simply for continuing operations and the payment of the wastewater treatment plant and the maritime park bonds. But I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, Councilman Wu.
Does the CRA have any reserves?
The CRA does have the funding that we have set aside, and the plan is that we're going to draw down $800,000 of that through '13 through '17, the ending of the new market tax credits. Those are set aside. You do, you will have bond reserves that are required on the bonds. There's a requirement of approximately, that you have to have about $1 million each year as of '10, one that's required to be there. And then you need about $1 million to $1 million one at September 30th each year. You're required to put funding aside for that payment to the wastewater treatment plant, and that's due in January of 2013. So unobligated reserves, not as such like you're thinking in the general fund that we have, but you do have the bond reserves, you have the money you set aside as part of the plan, $800,000 a year that will be used for payment of the debt. But that's it, that you don't have a reserve policy to set funds aside like the general fund does.
Anymore?
So we don't have reserve funds such as we have for the general fund?
Right. And really, part of that is a legal issue. You know, any money that you don't have obligated for programs or that you don't spend in a particular year required to be paid back to the entities that fund it, so the city, DIB, and the county, if you don't put those aside. So any funds we would have available, in past, we would run them through the Debt Service Fund or show them obligated to projects. So the funds do not have to be returned back to the entities.
Last question, would you recommend that we have one?
I think it would be difficult to have a reserve like the general fund, with my understanding of the TIF regulations and the CRA regulations, of those funds having to go back to the entity. Because it either has to be obligated to a project, or it has to be in a debt service reserve. So you could put all those money in a debt service reserve, but if you had any extra, but if you did, then it would be difficult to pull those dollars out, almost impossible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pratt.
Thank you. Yes?
Just wanted a little clarification. So we gave the $500,000 for the back of the house, and then we, and then there's the two-waying, and then we have about $700,000 left for projects? Is that what you said?
For whatever the CRA wants to leave.
Right, right, right.
But those are one-time monies?
Yeah, no, I know. But then, I know in our budget, we had a possible $300,000 that we were setting aside as potential if the maritime park couldn't afford its maintenance or something.
That is still there and budgeted, yes.
And that's in addition to the $700,000, or that's part of that $700,000?
In addition to.
Okay, so there's about $1 million that isn't technically tied up with something?
Right. You have budgeted the 300, depending on what happens with that, and then the 700, I think we budget them in the urban core.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Barker? I think what I am, what I discern from this is certainly, we have, as an entity or an agency, we've placed a tremendous amount of confidence, is what I'll say, in the, what will be the multiplier effect of the community maritime park. That, combined with our obligation for, to ECUA, will hopefully spur the level of redevelopment that will in turn generate a continued and increased tax base for us. But what I want to remind everyone is that with those obligations, we really don't have the funding in its current state and projections for identifying any sort of major projects that would have the CRA signature on them. So I encourage all of us to think throughout this year about any and every possible sort of role we can play that does nothing but increase, again, what I call the vertical, the built environment within our CRA, which then translates to more tax dollars, ad valorem tax revenue. Next I have as a discussion item, just because I think it's very pertinent, that's the, since it is our district, that the mayor's Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee, as I looked at the press release and the paperwork, they have been appointed by the mayor to study specifically what sort of plans that already exist within the CRA district can be, in fact, implemented in today's market. From what I understand from the mayor is, he is looking forward to the committee coming up with a, basically, a list of, not strategies, but actual implementation, in that I like to, I use the term "reality redevelopment," reality-based redevelopment. We have a compilation of previous plans, and I don't want to take away from the integrity of any of those planners or the planning sessions, but most of what we had did not, did not anticipate, basically, a market, an economic climate that exists today. And I, so what I think that we're, we are fortunate to have this committee now appointed so that they can help us as a CRA understand what we may do as a governing body within the CRA district. Any comments? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few questions. I know the press release, it appears to actually used a picture from the 2010 adopted plan from the CRA. And I read the statements, and I'm excited about hearing from the folks that have been appointed. There's varied background and very accomplished people that are going to be involved in this, so I look forward to hearing. I did want to know who on staff, if it'll be Ms. Winterberg-Lipp that will be developing the agendas, or who will be doing that? And then also, is the 2010 plan the basis for the discussion? Is that the data that's being used, since that's the most recent plan, that the state statute requires the CRA to actually have that plan in place? You know, is that the data that's going to be used on these discussions, or what information will they be working with?
I cannot answer your question about staffing at this time, but certainly will, I'll pass that on to the mayor's office. But I do know that the 2010 plan will be part of the package that that committee will use. I understand they are looking at beyond that. And in addition, as Councilman Gerald's mentioned, I would like to see included in that the recent, if that was a 2010 meeting that occurred with the City Council identifying their strategic goals, that Councilman Gerald's referenced last month. For example, that needs to be put in front of the committee as well, to see, are there any items there that were applicable to the Urban Redevelopment Committee's marching orders?
And I assume any costs will come from the mayor's budget, since it's his committee that he's put together?
That's what I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some concerns about this. I saw the list of people, great respect for all of them, particular three of them that I know very well, and I'd love to have their input on this, on our downtown. But as we were just discussing, we have the 2010 plan, which I would say was developed knowing our financial situations. We knew we didn't have the money, and it has an implementation plan. It says, here are the projects we want to be accomplishing. And amazingly, we are accomplishing many of them. The two-wayings, Spring and Baylen is going on, Main Street. We managed to finagle the city to pay for our own project. That's a good way to leverage our position.
Yes.
And so these plans aren't sitting around gathering dust. There is an implementation plan within that 2010 plan. And I think that instead of gathering more people to have more input on it, it's time to actually start working on how we're going to do the things in there. And one of the things, as was just discussed, is we don't have the money for doing a lot of great things. So I think that the most pertinent thing for us to be doing is figuring out how to get money. One of the things that Mr. Cohen and I had discussed was, there's possibilities of creating 501(c)(3)'s that are sort of government affiliated, just like with the maritime park, that could get new market tax credits. There are a lot of financial things that we should be exploring. And I, while I respect the members of this committee, they aren't really the banker kinds that would be able to set up, what are our creative financing schemes to do what we want to do? The, sort of, the missions of build a community that is competitive in today's economy, well, that's just about as vague as our plan. So I think that this group, they, I think they would end up spending a lot of time reviewing the plan, basically coming up with a generic list that we still wouldn't be able to implement. And I, while I respect that they'd be willing to do it, I think that in the end, they would have, there's not much we will be getting out of it. And my second real concern is about process. You know, the charter gives the council the authority to establish boards, commissions, and authorities. This is called a committee. If you look up the definition of committee and commission, it's about the same thing. They're playing games of semantics, and I think that that's a real mistake, and that we need to talk about what are the powers of the council and what are the powers of the mayor. And I, we let it slide a little bit because of the transition, but I think that at this point, we as a council, the CRA doesn't have the authority, but when we switch our hats, we need to say what our role is. And if we want that advice, then we form a committee to give us that advice. But we can't have the mayor using a power that's ours, that is granted in the charter, to assemble this committee. I think if we want to go forward with this idea, it should be under council initiative. And so those are my concerns. I know that the CRA doesn't have the power to make a committee or direct the clerk to do anything, but I am eager to hear from other people what their concerns are and whether they share this concern about the games, you know? If it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it is a duck, I'm sorry. And so this is a real concern about the balance of power in this government. The council has the power to do this, and the mayor hasn't been granted that power. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, along those same lines, I would hope that this committee will go through a one-on-one crash course as to what CRA is all about. I think that we have stretched significantly the major thrust of what CRA was established for. And we really need to know why it was established and what it can be utilized for. And as long as they can stay within those boundaries, I feel comfortable with any kind of deliberation, but I would hope that we could stay and give them a real good crash course as to what CRA is for and why it was established. Thank you.
Yes, President Hall.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the board. My concern was a little bit what I've read in the press, that the plans had been sitting around for years, gathering dust. That had been true. I don't know if you remember, three councils ago, I used to carry this leather satchel around with me, and I finally got the opportunity to bring them out, all the different downtown CRA plans that we had, that had been literally gathering dust, some as many as 10 years old. And then Mr. Cohen wisely brought in a group, may not have been the guys that I would have chosen, or Mr. Spencer would have chosen, but he brought in Looney, Rex, and Kiss, who really is the framework for it, used those plans, which they said were all pretty good plans, they just weren't connected, you know? Wasn't really a coherent plan. And then with, I think, unprecedented community input, came up with what I think's a pretty good plan that the last council or CRA had adopted. So I wouldn't want to divert too much from that, and I do agree with Dr. Pratt that it was done at a time where we, you know, the economy is where it pretty much is right now. But I'd diverge from Dr. Pratt a little bit on the mayor's authority to do that. Regardless of what the charter says, and it does empower us to do that, I just can't imagine us having the power to tell that the mayor, that you can't ever get an advisory committee together to give you advice by any name, you know? It is, what do we, I can look at the extreme here, is that if he had a group of people that met regularly over at house for Saturday morning coffee, you know, and that just says, okay, here's what we got, guys, you know, I can't name you a committee because the charter doesn't allow me to do that, but he still needs a group of people to give him advice. He's just doing it in a more open and transparent way here. And I just don't, I don't have the same problem with it that Dr. Pratt does.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo the concerns that Councilwoman Pratt brought up. I too have the same shared concerns. As I read this memo, one sentence really stands out. "The goal of the committee will be to help the mayor, the city council, the CRA, and the CNPA move forward in the execution of previous planning work." Then it goes on to list some of the documents. So the purpose of this committee is clearly to provide advice to the CRA. Says it right here. It's, or it doesn't use the word advice, it says "to help" the CRA move forward. So the purpose of this committee is not just to give advice to the mayor, it's also to give advice to the CRA. And I do believe that exceeds the mayor's authority. If he wants to set up a committee just to advise him, he has the authority to do that. But this goes beyond his authority. And I have a problem with the lack of transparency here. I mean, if you're going to set up a committee to advise me on something, you need to bring that issue to me before you set up a committee to advise me on something. Furthermore, I would want some input into what that committee would do and who's going to be appointed to it. And as I look at who some of the appointees are, I have some concerns about that. My own personal opinion, sitting out there in the north part of the country, is that some council or CRA members, probably, it appears, have had prior knowledge of this and may have a lot more information than I've been exposed to on the purpose of this committee and what it's intended to do. I do know, from looking at the records of the Secretary of State, that one of the individuals is in a business that two of our members are also in. So it raises some concerns to me. If the mayor had come to us and said, "I want to do this because maybe we need to have somebody who can help kick the can down the road," so to speak. But if he had come to us with this idea first, so that we had prior knowledge of it and input, that may be different. But to just send me a copy of a letter that you've sent to pre-selected people telling me that you're setting up this me that you're setting up this committee to help me do something, number one, I don't believe it's constitutional. Number two, that gives me no confidence at all in this process, and we need to have some confidence in the process. So I have some real concerns, and I want to reiterate what Dr. Pratt has already so eloquently laid out. But I, I do wish that we would learn to do things a little differently around here, and I think we would get better vibes from each other, or better communication between the city council, the CR. Remember, we have an interlocal agreement with the city to provide the staff to implement the plans we already have. So I don't really see the purpose, as far as the CRA goes, of having a committee to help us do something. We already have an interlocal agreement. We're paying for the staff to implement the programs we already have. So that's where I'm at, and I'll shut up.
All right. Councilman Gerald.
I've heard it all. But I, it takes me back to last, our last official council meeting, when I indicated how essential it is that we have a face-to-face talk, both body, both groups, the mayor and, and the council, so that we can clearly define and understand the roles of each group. Now, going back to the advisory committee, and I recall when Looney, Ricks, and Kiss were here, and the problem that I had with their plan was that we never implemented it. And we tend to have a habit of doing that. We'll get the information, we'll ask for it, we'll get it, and we don't put it to work. But in order to create that trust and transparency that's very much needed, we need to have a serious powwow. And when you show up, bring your, your new charter document with you so that we can look at who does what around here, because otherwise we will continue to have meetings like this. And I'd rather not have meetings like this. I'd rather for that openness to exist from the start. And then we can, as Sherri had mentioned, you know, something can be more palatable if you know that it's coming. If you have an opportunity to weigh in, to discuss it, debate it, do whatever you want to do with it. But I, it is my, I am convinced that when we are here before the public, these little details has, they, they must be worked out in advance. It'll be healthier for all of us. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Asmar.
Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, John Asmar, chief staff for, for Mayor Hayward. Let me, let me be able to speak on behalf of him. There were several misunderstandings, and I apologize for those. The purpose of the letter that went out to each of you, copied on you, was, was just that, to inform you of the mayor's direction. As you know, that there is an interlocal agreement between CRA and the city that was enacted early on a couple of months ago. And as a result, the mayor has reached, in order to, to satisfactory and exceed the expectations of this board, the mayor has reached out to community representatives in the private sector to assist him in, in assisting you with your overall policymaking decisions, but also with the implementation of the plans that have been adopted previously. Just like he did with the port and the pension, using his authority as mayor, he selected a few members that he thought community-minded members who could help him be an administrator to you, to this board. So by no means did he want to usurp his authority, nor interfere with your authority to appoint your own committee in the implementation of special projects. I'm sorry for any misunderstanding within the body of the letter, that this board, the, the committee that he's appointed, it was not intended to be an advisory board of the CRA, but an advisory board to him as he advises you in his role pursuant to the interlocal agreement. Mr. Gerald, certainly the mayor welcomes an opportunity and open dialogue with each and every one of you about his role and, and your role. He, he wants to, to play an interactive role and participate, have this transparent and open dialogue with each of you. And, but he's also, as a mayor, that likes to get things done. As you know, he's all about implementation. He has repeatedly said, and has said in the press release and in the letter, he would like to implement the plans that have been passed by this board, both previous councils and, and some new members on this board. So he's, he's, his intent is not to reinvent the wheel, but, but to get things done as the executive agency. And he's proven that by pushing up some, some of your projects and, and created some new projects, such as Main Street, reinventing the will with Admiral Mason Park instead of a stormwater park. He's brought a more of attractive parks recreational features. So I, I think he's proven the fact that he can get things done, and he wants to be able to assist you in getting those, those, those things done very cooperatively and very openly and very transparently. And so I apologize for any misunderstanding between this legislative body and the mayor. We certainly will work on it, as we always will, and he welcomes the opportunity to speak with you individually at any given time, as he always has and always will. And I certainly can answer any specific questions you may have, but that, you know, the, I will tell you one other aspect of this committee that he really wants to focus on, that I talked about during the budget process, that Mr. Barker alluded to today and that we've alluded to all along, is without, it's important for us to plan and implement the infrastructure that you've adopted through those plans, very important. But as Mr. Townsend said and others, other people have said, you've got to be able to connect the dots. Infrastructure is very important, and the investment in that infrastructure is very important in order to create economic opportunities. And what this city needs, as you, as you know, and you have seen as you deliberated over project after project after project, is that we've got to be able to attract and build our tax base in order to succeed. We have, we have 50 acres of wonderful shovel-ready properties just within a mere two or three blocks of this city hall. And the mayor gets it, you get it, and what he's trying to do and what this committee is going to do to help him in the private sector is be able to connect the dots. One thing that we do need, as we see retail, and great, it was a great news story this morning to learn that the Studers have now invested another, another building at an anchor on South Palafox Street. But we're, we, we have that retail, I guess, curiosity built out there, and more and more people are interested in our South Palafox and our North Palafox corridor. But what we desperately need is market affordable housing to build a relationship with that retail, and also to be able to attract a developer, if you will, an investor, to build that, that housing for us downtown. This committee, and I know Dr. Ford has said it to you individually and to other individuals, if you've had a meeting with him, one of the, one of the, the weaknesses that he sees with being able, that in his business, being able to attract highly qualified and well-educated scientists to assist him in what he does, which we all know is outstanding, is the lack of affordable housing. And so this committee, one of its goals, one of its goals, which by the way, while we talk about in our plans, we really don't have the specifics of how to do that. And sometimes it's controlled by market, sometimes it's controlled by infrastructure, sometimes it's controlled by policy, but we need, we need that specific plan. And so one of the responsibilities this committee, very specifically, and there's more, but one of them, is how do I create, how do we create, how do you create, both as a CRA and city council, in creating incentives to attract a private developer or contractor to build market affordable housing? Now, incentives doesn't necessarily mean have to be financial. They also can be changes to your land development code, changes to your policies. Now, obviously, the mayor can't make those changes. He has to work with you. And so in spirit of that, I apologize for any misunderstanding. He is trying to bring recommendations pursuant to his role as the executive agency for your consideration as part of the legislative process. And if I can answer any questions, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Yes. Councilwoman Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Asmar. I, I agree with everything you say. But I want to take you back to January of last year, okay? The mayor let it be known to city council that he wanted to set up an advisory committee to the mayor on the port. At the same time, the council was considering setting up our own committee on the port. And I, and I took the position, let's give the mayor the opportunity to have his advisory committee and see what they bring to the table. And so we backed off from setting up a committee on the port. And because I, I felt that that was one of the things that, that the mayor was elected to do, was to take on that issue. So I felt comfortable knowing that he had come to us, that we knew he, he wanted to do that, and I didn't feel that it was necessary to have two committees basically doing the same thing. So the heart of my complaint is how he's gone about doing it. I mean, I don't think anyone, at least I wouldn't have had any objection to him having an advisory committee to, you know, bring suggestions forward to us. But I, I want to know in advance, just like we did with the port. And, and that turned out really good. He had a port advisory committee, they did a great job, they came here and they did a great presentation, they had a lot of great, great ideas. And so if you can just, you know, think back to how that all transpired and compare it to how this advisory committee was set up, two thoroughly in different approaches. That's why I think we need better communication from the mayor. So that's.
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Myers, listen, you know, one, you know, if, if it wasn't, if we didn't present it the way we'd need to be, we're certainly open for that discussion, and, and we will resolve that issue. You know, we're, we're, we're building upon great things here, we're improving ourselves. We make mistakes, and, you know, we will, we will make sure that we're on top of it so that you get the information when you need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to ask.
Councilwoman Pratt.
Thank you. Someone had asked where the funding and staffing for this board will be coming from, and he said he would ask the mayor, but since you're close enough.
Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, members of this honorable agency, there is no funding that I'm aware of, funding needs.
Staffing requires.
The staffing, Ryan to my left will, will assist the, the committee as part of her duties on the CRA. And then, of course, if there are other aspects that are necessary, certainly as projects are, are looked upon, for instance, if there's any revisions to land development code, certainly planning is going to be involved. But we don't foresee any additional staffing or funding needs at the moment.
Well, I guess, though, I mean, time is money. And so when we take her time onto this, then that is an expenditure of the CRA, that she could be spending her time doing other things. And having watched Ms. Morris try to absorb CRA into her life, it seems like it's a full-time job just doing CRA and then adding this, I think is, is a concern in terms of that. And I will say that, that part of that concern stems from, Ms. Myers has repeatedly asked about the environmental advisory board, and we've been told there's not sufficient staffing, there's not sufficient staffing for a council-requested board. And now that the mayor wants a board, we can find that additional staffing. And that, that's also a concern in this, you know? And I appreciate, I understand that the mayor would like advisor, advice from the community. I just am pointing out that that's one of the powers the charter gives to the council. It doesn't give that power to the mayor. Second, on the, the issue of the housing, I think that that is an important point, and, and that isn't something that's just been sitting not talked about. I've had great conversations with Kim Kimbrough about some initiatives that the CRA was working on that haven't come through because of fin, financial situations in the real world. But, but these aren't things that haven't been looked forward, looked at. So I, I'm concerned that we are working on things, and I'm not sure what, what exactly this group's going to tell us, that we couldn't do if we had some workshops and, and talked about it. We're all very familiar with the plan, and so I'm very concerned about it. And then a quick disclaimer, Ms. Myers mentioned that some of the people do business. Ken Ford's my boss. That's my disclaimer. I do business with Ken Ford. So, thank you.
Yes. Councilman Hall.
Just a suggestion is that Thursday night during Old Business is bring this up and move to approve the board that's, the mayor has already appointed. I don't think, even if we disapprove, yeah, didn't approve it, that it would go away. But it seems like to me that Ms. Myers was willing to support a port advisory committee appointed by the mayor in lieu of ours that might be able to be willing to support this one. I don't know. I've since had problems with a couple of people that, that are on, on there, but I would hope there would be at least, you know, five votes on, on the council for, for that to give approval to the mayor for it. Now, I know that can be a dangerous road to go down politically, but I was just going to offer that up as a suggestion.
Thank you.
I know I'd be supporting it.
All right. As, as I would be too. Thank you. We have one, one more, Mr. Asmar, and then we've got an audience member that would like to speak.
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Pratt, the mayor doesn't, you know, and I love these, the opportunity to speak, and, you know, one thing that I, that you know and that we know and as professionals is that the mayor doesn't necessarily always have to agree, and you don't always have to agree with him. And we can be respectful and have that dialogue and agree to disagree, which is part of the democracy in the great country we live in. In this particular case, I will say that he disagrees with you. He disagrees with you because your statements that it's additional staff, it's not. It's one and the same. He sees it as the same great work that this board and other boards have, have adopted. And all he's doing, and he does, Councilman Hall, he does believe that he does have the authority to appoint a committee, and certainly, but doesn't, wouldn't, you know, disagree with your ability to have your own committee. I mean, that's part of the legislative body. So, so I want to make sure that it's on the record that he does disagree with that, that position, that this is, he sees this as one and the same. He's a doer. He wants to assist you as his contract, as he is contractually obligated pursuant to the interlocal agreement between the CRA and the city, and he aims to do that. But he knows that he wants to come back in the spirit of cooperation and bring forth those recommendations so that this body can collectively discuss it openly and transparently.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I was sitting here reviewing the, the charter, and I was trying to find in the charter where it states that the mayor doesn't have the power to appoint committees or form his own committees. Maybe the city attorney could help me before he gets and runs out. Is, is it in the charter that the mayor does not have the authority to appoint his own committees, Mr. Messer?
I'm not really running out, I'm running for the charter.
Yeah, and, and I, because I, you know, I've heard some comments that maybe he doesn't have the authority, and I, I disagree with that. I think he has total authority to, to, to form his own committees and advisory committees, et cetera. I, I can't find it, and I've been reviewing it to, to see if I've missed something the, the many times that I've read it.
Well, let's see if we can do the easy answer. The easy answer is that the charter doesn't. The easy answer is that the charter doesn't...
Address it.
...speak right in terms of what the mayor can't do. It gives the mayor certain powers and duties. So, we're not gonna find what the mayor can't do. Is that satisfactory?
Well, yeah, that's kind of where I was going. I think that, you know, I would hate to be the person to tell the mayor that he can't put together his own committee to research something and advise him on. And I, you know, I would just hate to go down that road. I can't find it in the charter, and if someone here on the CRA can find it, if they will point it out to me, I'd gladly read that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll read this section. Unless otherwise provided by law, city council shall determine procedures, membership, and removal from city boards, commissions, and authorities. I would consider this to be a city board. It will be staffed by city, and therefore, the city council shall determine procedures for city boards, commissions, and authorities. It doesn't say committees, but it says commissions.
You know, I read that, Dr. Pratt, and I still...
Go ahead, Council, Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, I read that, and I still, I still don't read that, that he cannot have his own advisory committees. And I'm not an attorney, and I don't profess to be one, but I still don't read it as that way. So, I personally don't have a problem with the mayor putting together advisory committees. I think that that makes, I think that that's a good thing to do, a prudent thing to do, and I think that he has a responsibility, the citizens of this community, to take community leaders such as have been appointed to this advisory committee. Community leaders that have a vested interest in this community and the success of this community. I, and again, I welcome all these members that have actually volunteered their time to sit on this committee and to offer their advice. I think that this is a great thing to do, and I just don't have this tremendous problem with this that some of us seem to have. And I welcome this, and I'm hoping that this goes forward because I would welcome these community leaders' input on how to make the city a better place. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. DuVasson. And speakers, I'm going to ask for you to limit your speaking to two minutes.
Thank you very much. I'll try to speak quickly. The question that I have is regarding this committee. Since Mr. Johnson says that the mayor has a right, I would agree with him. The mayor can name all the committees he wants to as his advisory committees. However, the way this one seems to be impaneled and has been reflected in the press, it would appear that they would be serving to bring recommendations to this body, which would then, particularly if they are being staffed by your staff, would be making them a commission, a board, whatever you want to call them. But they are bringing information and implementation actions to your body. So, would that mean, then, that we would be having public meetings and that all documents which they would be reviewing would be made available to the public? And in regards to the staffing issue, because we have not had an active staff of the CRA for several months now, it would seem that there are quite a few things with the CRA that have kind of slowed down, and decisions have been made by staff without the CRA group meeting and the public being a part of the decision. So, at what time span will this implementation begin? Will it not occur until after it has come back to CRA, or is that not something that he is going? And the last thing that I would like to point out is that Mr. Gerald asks for a joint meeting with the mayor and this group. The mayor is the leader of the CRA Response Administration, which is to assist, not to direct this group. So, I would remind you that if they are serving in an assistance, that is a subservient role as a staff, as opposed to a staff-driven organization which would direct you on what to do. So, I would encourage you as a CRA to assert the separation which the CRA and the city have. They do need to work jointly together, but they are two separate entities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a few questions? We could answer them about the public documents. So, there is...
As I understand, and I will get, we'll get those answers that Ms. DuVasson asked. Yes, Mr. Asmar.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be more than happy to answer your questions. First of all, all public advisory board meetings are public, so they will be advertised and open for the general public. Therefore, all the documents will be available, just like the pension advisory board meeting, just like the port advisory. You know, I sensed a little hostility in her comments, which I don't think exists. I mean, this board is to assist the mayor, to assist you pursuant to his contractual obligations. And I think we will work cooperative like we always have, you know, whether it be, you know, from an implementation side based on the legislative and policymaking side of this body. So, you'll, you know, those recommendations will be brought forth, and if it requires a land development code change, we'll have to go through the planning board, certainly have to go through the city council. If it involves financial incentives, it certainly will need to be appropriated in some capacity at some level. So, you know, there's quite, quite room of participation, and we look forward to that dialogue, that very open dialogue in order to accomplish what we all believe to be is a better plan for the city, implementing those plans that you've adopted and moving the city forward quickly.
Thank you.
May I respond to his comment about my personal hostility as he perceived it to be? There was no hostility intended. The mayor and I...
Obviously, I'm gonna say yes.
Well, I would hope so because there was a personal comment, I believe, that should not have really been forthcoming. But the mayor and I visited about this, and I am very positive about the opportunities that citizens being involved would present. But I am just merely pointing out again, as I always do, that process and separation of powers is an integral part of the balance of this government. Thank you. No hostility, Mr. Asmar.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's, I don't think Councilwoman Dewise has spoken yet.
I spoke once, but I did want to try to wrap this up. I took some time after this information came out and the questions that I had come up with. But I did some research because I am very concerned that this is established as, from a state statute, and we are the governing body of the CRA, and that the citizens also know the plan, thank you, the plan that's in place is required by that state statute, and that's what must be followed. And that was my concern for that being the data that is used for the basis. The CRA plan, the 2010 CRA plan establishes the framework for transformative policies and investments in the community redevelopment area. Within that context, the plan provides policy, programmatic, and fiscal direction for the CRA as Pensacola reshapes its urban landscape and waterfront. The plan is comprised of the following two volumes, and these are available online for anyone in the community to look at, and they're valuable information in both of these. The volume one provides background information about the agency and the urban core community redevelopment area and plan, outlines strategic framework, themes, and principles. It provides a market analysis as of 2009 for the redevelopment area, and it establishes key principles for redevelopment and illustrates the vision and recommendations of the plan. The entire second volume is the implementation strategies. Phasing and priority capital projects to achieve the CRA vision established in volume one of the CRA plan. It also functions as a reference for volume one, and together they comprise the complete CRA plan. Volume two is intended to be able to be used as a standalone document that can be referenced for implementation strategies, priorities, and schedules. This volume also addresses non-capital programs and activities that support or may be necessary to implement the capital projects. When this plan came out and council adopted it, it created such excitement in this community, and I know I was a member of the PEDC at the time. They were very excited about it. This was ready to be rolled out to the citizens at civic meetings, at neighborhood associations, whoever's interested in it. And I think it's a valuable, very healthy, and alive plan. So, I don't, I don't see the need to spend a great deal of time reworking what's in place. I do want to hear from the individuals that have volunteered their time, and I respect them for doing that. But this is the plan that's in place per the statute, so it should start from that.
All right. Councilman Townsend. All right. I'd like to comment, and that is, I'm disappointed in this, this discussion, where it has headed, if anything. For me, it indicates if we actually tried to adopt even a schedule for workshops, I'm not sure we could accomplish that. I think we've got a group of volunteers that the mayor has appointed. They will provide us valuable information, and as I review this, and certainly we accept Mr. Asmar's apologies to those that feel that the process was in some way tainted, but I want to look beyond that and remind fellow CRA members that what the mayor assembled this committee to do, from what I can see, that does not at all devalue or abandon the documents as referenced by Councilwoman Dewise. I see those as very much companion pieces, if not guiding pieces for this committee. They have been charged to realistically, to develop an action plan, an implementation plan, timeline, that is basically, right now, a three- to five-year timeline. And I look forward to getting this information from volunteers. As CRA chair, I want to go on the record as saying I welcome the volunteers' input. All of them bring individual respective talents and skills to the committee. I'm going to, I'm going to, I choose to not have any discussion on city-owned properties and CRA. It's on the agenda. It's a, it's a map that we weren't able, as I was gathering materials, we don't have a PowerPoint presentation. The public can't see it. I know that's frustrating if we're referencing any graphics that they can't see. So, I'd like to save that for next, our next meeting. All right.
Sounds good to me.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, two minutes, please. And tell us your name and your...
Thank you for reminding me. It's Mike Kilmer, and I live at 2818 West Jackson Street. I appreciate what Councilwoman Pratt is saying very much. The thing that I've heard both Mr. Reynolds say in the city council meeting and Mr. Asmar now is that the mayor will be happy to meet with any one of you individually, but I haven't heard him agree to meet with the whole group. It seems, it seems very obvious to me, if I can finish with my two minutes, that Mr. Spencer and Mr. Hall have strong relationships with the mayor as individuals, and they tend to agree with everything the mayor wants to do, probably because they have his ear anyway as individuals. The women on the council, all three of them, seem to feel like, from what they've said publicly in the meetings, this, the mayor does not respect the advice or the power of this council, and that concerns me a lot. I wouldn't be surprised if Chairman Wu and Johnson feel the same way. I'm not sure where Mr. Townsend and Larry Johnson are on it. Thank you.
All right, any new business? No new business? All right, I call this meeting to end.
The board forum, yeah. Anyway, I'm welcome, and just for the record, want to point out that all committee members are here. I think Pratt has had to step out for a rest break. First thing we've got is the board forum. You get one minute to bring issues of importance to your neighborhood to the city council, to the committee. Or, you got a yellow sheet back there, sir. Yes. Ms. May, you have one minute. Now, remember, this, this point of the meeting here was really my explanation that I've gotten publicly from President Dewise was meant to bring, you know, certain issues like 3-1-1 issues that aren't being resolved, and that some of these things that we've been using it for here lately are really more appropriate for open forum on Thursday night. You've got one minute.
Yes, sir, thank you. I just wanted to bring up, I know that the first game is opening in April, and I would just like to know if there's been any communication with transit, say for trolleys, or to help with the parking down here when the ballgame starts. And that was, I just wanted to bring that up and see how we're moving forward with that, that's all. And if we could just maybe, you know, on Thursday night, if someone could, whoever is in charge of moving that forward, I would, I'd really like to see some communication going on so we could get, get some trolleys going, get some promotion going on the transit for our first game in April. So, that's what I wanted to bring up.
Okay. I see Mr. Reynolds writing. Thank you. Marlon Mueller.
Hi, Marlon Mueller, 4012 West Gregory. First, I'd like to say, Mr. Spencer, I'd like to call for you to bring the chair to vote this Thursday, and I'd like all of you to vote, other than Mr. Hall. Second thing is, after sitting through this meeting, I spend all my time out with the public, out talking to people, seeing where things are, you know, how, what people feel like, how things are going. And I have to say that every time the mayor sends somebody from his office, and I see the three mayor's lapdogs here, it reminds me how out of touch you people are with the reality of the average person. You have apparently no idea what the average person is thinking. And I'm not talking about myself, I'm not average, a little bit below. But I spend all day, days, 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 talking to the average person. One thing I would like to suggest, if you have specific plans for certain few number of people, and you want the support of the average person, maybe your ideas are great. If they are, educate the average person because they have no idea what you guys want. And, and I think that we, you know, I don't know what you guys have planned. All I can say is that being out of the loop makes the average person nervous. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Kilmer.
Hey. I'm Mike Kilmer, 2818 West Jackson Street. I know that the environmental advisory board is on the agenda, and I hope that you guys all see the importance of having them staffed. They haven't met since March, as you all know, because there's no staff member to organize these volunteers. In the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting, Megan Pratt pointed out that it's hard to get things done when there's no money. So, therefore, when you have very qualified people volunteering, it's like cranking up the air conditioner and opening the windows. You're wasting resources because not all resources come down to money.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Reynolds, mayor communications and actions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First thing on the agenda is subject award of contract for A&E services with DAG Architects for Woodland Heights and Legion Field Resource Centers. The recommendation is that city council award a contract for RFQ 11-TAC 031 for architectural and engineering services for the construction of a community resource center in Woodland Heights and Legion Field to DAG Architects, Pensacola, Florida, for an estimated fee of $293,696 for the Woodland Heights Center and for an estimated fee of $298,696 for the Legion Field Center, based upon the final cost of construction.
Move approval.
Second.
Second. You have a motion and a second. I'd like for Mr. Spencer, who's been involved in this process, to give a little explanation of how we got... of how we got where we are today, because you've been pretty involved in this, at least in the latter half of it. Thank you, President Hall. This is what I hope is the first of a process that allows for the, I guess, is what I would call peer, peers, reviewing peers in the, in the process of selecting for professional services. In this case, the selection committee, and I know we have one member here, they were comprised of, again, peers, professionals, architects, that were evaluating, as I understand, 18 submissions for professional services, and evaluating those based on the standards of excellent design, proven track record of being able to combine the artistry and innovation and resourceful use of materials. So it's a, it's, it's, I think, an exciting new way that the design sort of component in our physical world that is utilizing public funds will be, will be improved in the City of Pensacola. Okay, thank you. Any comment, questions? Yes, Mr. Dewis.
I would just like clarification, and I'm not sure I'm asking the question right, but when you look through the itemization, it talks about lead certification support being optional. And I know, since I've been on council for certain, but I remember Dr. Wu brought this up right when I began, about us not taking just the minimum bid, but if we possibly had to pay more, to always look at the efficiencies of a building. And why would that be made optional? I mean, why would someone design something that is not lead certified at this point? I mean, it's become the, the basic standard almost. So that's my question, is why is that optional and additional?
Thank you, Mr. President. These buildings will be lead certified. I think the question is, is what degree of lead certification we're talking about? The mayor has made a determination that all buildings, as we move forward in the process of capital improvements for the city, will be lead certified.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I, I've heard a lot of concern in the community about the process of how this came to be. And, but leave that as it is. I started looking at the fees on this, just because I wanted to get a sense of, you know, how much did this lead add, and all these things. So I started looking back at some other projects that we've done. And this one, all together, the fee for the two buildings, which, which will have some cost savings, I had hoped, by being two community centers being done by the same architect. I thought that was partially why we were doing it this way. The, the architecture and engineering fee was gonna, is gonna be about 10%. I looked back at the library, because the library is a similar price. It was $7.6 million. It's also lead certified. And the architecture and engineering total, everything combined, was 7%. Sanders Beach was a 5.5%, 5.5 million dollar project. And again, it wasn't lead certified, but it came at 7%. I'm very concerned about that. And I, I spoke to some other architects in town, just to get a sense, what, what do you charge for something like that? And a number of them said 7% to 8%. When we're talking about 2%, 2% is not much. But then when you say 2% of $6 million, that becomes real money. The Legion Field will be housing a library that's twice our library book budget. You know, we could get, we could have a really well-staffed, really well-stocked library if we could save some of this money. And so I think that especially as we've heard from Mr. Spencer in our discussion of staffing, you know, there are a lot of people out there hungry for work. I think we could have gotten a much better deal on this. I don't want to postpone this. I, I, I don't like the idea of putting this off, but I think that we could get a much better community center had this, had the administration negotiated a better fee. And so I, I think that, that approving this is a mistake for the, the quality of this project. I understand we want great architecture, but we don't need Taj Mahals in the middle of neighborhoods. You know, the library is, is a community touchstone. Sanders Beach is a very unique thing. These are community centers. We hope they're great, but they're not. They don't need all of the bells and whistles. And I'd rather save those bells and whistles for the things in there and make a better product. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the committee? Ms. Myers.
Well, I share the same concerns that Dr. Pratt just expressed. And also, I've heard some concerns from people in the community that, um, community people, people out there in the community feel that they should have had some input into the selection of the architects. So I hate to see the project delayed, but I won't be supporting it either at this time.
Anybody from the audience, public? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, let's do a show of hands here. All in favor? Okay. Opposed? Seven to two. Next. Okay, next, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The subject is resolution requesting Amtrak to restore Sunset Limited Passenger Rail Service in Florida. The recommendation is that city council approve a resolution requesting Amtrak to restore Sunset Limited Passenger Rail Service in Florida. And Mr. President, if I may, I want to make sure that everybody understands that this council actually was one of the first organizations that made this request back in January 8th of 2009. So you are actually reaffirming that, and I want to applaud your efforts back at that time to see how important an issue this is. And we're looking forward to delivering this to, to where it needs to go now into the future, to make sure that everybody understands that this is an incredibly important piece of the infrastructure, transportation infrastructure here to the City of Pensacola.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion from the committee. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think it needs very much discussion. It's something that we're all desirable of, and we need to move forward with it. And if we can establish or reestablish that connection with the railroad, it would be an excellent, an excellent move.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sansing. Oh, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Reynolds, could you refresh my memory, the Amtrak station that we have there behind Bagel Heads there, lives in District 4? That is ready to, not ready to go, but it's in still pretty good shape there. I mean, we still own that, retain that, and where are we, where are we at on that station, exactly?
We do retain it. Councilman Johnson, I'll have to get you the specifics on it. I do know that it does need some repair work. Obviously, we would have to take a look at that prior to any service being reestablished, but we certainly can get that information for you exactly on what the issues are on Thursday.
Not necessarily immediately, I was just wondering how we were, what kind of shape that building was in. Thank you.
Mr. Sansing.
Gary Sansing, Citizen of the City, 1517 East Jackson. Yeah, I am reminded that there was a resolution passed back. It was a little behind the county, and at the time, Congress said there's not enough money for it. But you just keep plugging away. I mean, in the future, gas is gonna go up, people getting poor, and they're gonna be utilizing, not the planes, but buses and trains. And that, that, I'll, I'll stress it again. You can go from Jacksonville all the way, it used to go all the way to Santa Monica, California. I mean, they shut down in Santa Monica, but the city itself is by, bought the right-of-way from Santa Monica to LA. So this is important, and I stress, you people can pass a resolution, you can pound on the congressman, the senator's office, because that's what I've been doing. I think it's, again, get on the, get on board and pass this resolution.
Thank you, sir.
And not only that, you can call up the congressman and don't say, hey, there's no money, because when they waste dreams, they better start looking out for Joe Citizen or Mary Citizen. Okay?
Okay, thanks, sir. All in favor? Opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. President, the next thing on the agenda is subject request for license to use right-of-way, Scenic Heights Neighborhood Association. The recommendation is that city council approve their request for a license to use multiple rights-of-way for installation of nine neighborhood signs.
Move the approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Did you get that, Ms. Burnett? Dr. Pratt, motion, and Mr. Gerald, get the second. Discussion from the audience. Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Attorney.
The next item on the agenda is, the subject is authorization to file suit. We talked about this particular lawsuit generally, when we talked about code enforcement liens and the difficulty of enforcing them. This, this, if council authorizes it, will be the first lawsuit filed by the city in an effort to either force the landowner to pay the accumulated fines or suffer the foreclosure of the property. In order to file the lawsuit against the Markhams, who are owners of the property on 1917 West Servanty Street in Pensacola, the authority of the council was needed.
Okay. So you need a motion from us?
I'll make a motion that we give the city attorney the authority to commence the lawsuit.
Second. Have motion and a second. Discussion from the audience. Seeing none? Mr. Kilmer.
That's probably towards our neighborhood. Is it just, is it a residential place? Is it a business? Is it an empty lot? Just kind of curious.
It's a business.
An active business?
Yes.
So it's a bar?
I think generically speaking, it's a bar, but it has other attributes.
At the corner of, is it going to pace or a little further east?
Little further east.
By Walgreens? Okay, that's a very popular, seems like sadly, a community hub. I don't know. Makes me a little concerned. Like, I actually go there and put up flyers, but I want the community to know about things. It also seems, also sadly, kind of.
Mr. Kilmer, would you come to the microphone, please?
Yeah, sorry. Also sadly, it seems kind of like it's been there for a while. Is, is, is it likely that, is this lawsuit a really big one that's likely gonna close the place down? Or just kind of?
The outstanding lead amount is $22,738.50.
I guess that concerns me a little bit. Like I said, I don't frequent the place, because, just because, I mean, it's popular. It's a really popular place, and it seems like a lot of local people that hang out there, they walk there. I don't know what's gonna happen if it closed down, or, I mean, that's Mr. Townsend's district. I'd certainly be curious to hear his, you know, relationship with the place and the people that, that go there and stuff.
Mr. Townsend.
Thank you. If you'd like, after the meeting, I will share with you a lot of the information. That's in my district. And hanging out is a strong, is a different characterization of what I think is going on there. It has been an ISO for my district for years. I believe it's operating way beyond the contents of what he's licensed for. I would hope that we could shut it down all the way. So I will share with you the concern that we have about this place. This has to do with code violation and lien, but it is something that I wish we could really get rid of in that district, where we can open that corridor where respectable folks can come and feel safe down there.
Okay. And, and, you know, if you, the five years I've been at these meetings, if you could just, been here those, each of the meetings for five years, and hear some of the heartbreaking stories of people that live near there, and the, the damage that it does to their lives and their property values, you know, and, and so this code enforcement issue, and really, it comes down to respecting neighbors, you know? And that, that's what, whether it's in an East Hill neighborhood, North Hill, Downtown, Scenic Heights, you know, code violations affect entire neighborhoods, so. And, but like Mr. Townsend said, he can share stuff with you after the meeting. Okay, Ms. Myers.
Yes, and I just wanted to say, when I was walking door-to-door campaigning, it didn't matter what neighborhood I was in, from affluent neighborhoods to the poorest neighborhood, the single most important issue people express concerns to me about is code enforcement. So our council has decided we're gonna protect the integrity of all neighborhoods. So, and that we want a code enforcement process that finally has some teeth in it. So this is just part of that, that process, and so I'm glad that our council has, has taken the quality of life in our neighborhoods as seriously as, as it needs to be taken.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to remind everyone, this is the first of what we believe will be multiple cases that we, the staff will be bringing for authorization. As Mr. Messer and I explained to you at the last meeting, we've never done this before, at least in the, in the last 25 years that some of the senior staff have been here. Mr. Weinike, who will be giving you a brief a little later in regards to some code enforcement issues, had actually developed a checklist for us to score particular properties to determine whether or not it is something that we should do, whether or not we should bring it to council and request to, request to have suit initiated. And I'm sure that Mr. Weinike can certainly share that checklist with you, so you can see exactly how we're scoring these particular properties. But again, this is the first of those properties, and, and thank you, Councilwoman Myers, it is something that staff takes very seriously, and certainly appreciates the support of this council, because this is exactly what happens to our neighborhoods when we have one or two blighted pieces of property that then tends to eke out into the different neighborhoods and drag them down with them. And so certainly, the citizens of this great city should support the, should appreciate the support that the council is giving in, in regards to strengthening code enforcement.
And just to allay any concerns that the last speaker may have had, and to sort of make a long story short, you know, the, the ultimate transparency, the ultimate openness, the ultimate citizen participation, the ultimate due process is a trial, because the proceedings leading up to that trial, of course, are public, as well as the trial itself. And it enables both parties to call, confront, cross-examine witnesses, present their points of view toward an impartial hearing examiner, called a judge or a jury. So I would, you know, invite you to participate either as an observer, observer, or any other role that the law entitles you to, to, to participate within. The docket will be posted on the clerk's internet. You can feel free to call me at my office, I'll be glad to update you on what's going on, if, if you'd like to, to come and find out. But this process is, is actually the most open process you can imagine, far more open than, you know, code enforcement or, or the council meeting, because everyone is subjected to being examined under oath. People have a right to call their witnesses and. People have a right to call their witnesses, and now the facts are laid out against the law, and the judge makes a decision. So I don't think you, you have any legitimate worries that anyone's going to be railroaded or that their rights aren't going to be preserved, or the, you know, the city's trying to take over a business. That, that's just not the case.
Thank you very much for taking the time to explain that. Can I just really, I think, I don't want to be defending like a seedy place. I have been in there over the years a bunch of times to get a bottle of liquor. It just, the thing that makes me nervous is it's kind of the only neighborhood bar in that neighborhood, and it's very much where a lot of poor black people hang out. It's kind of the only place, other than a church, that they can hand out, hang out since, as I know Mr. Spencer is concerned about, our cultural, our culture has become such a sprawl, where people do their shopping at giant supermarkets, and, and the community centers are not very terribly well-attended. Thank you. And thank you very again, Mr. Messer, and all of you for taking the time to explain that.
Thank you, sir. Gary.
Gary Sansing, 1517 East Jackson. You know, I can't believe that this is the first time that you, people have actually made an action. I know that you will be. It's, it's like earlier, when the thing came up, where people might miss cutting their grass, or, or not getting the painting done right away. We are tolerant within this community. And I drive out that way quite often. And it's like Mike said, there's nothing over there. Maybe you do need to clean up the neighborhood, but, you know, people, we are going through some hard times, and we're just going to have to tighten our belt and help one another and be tolerant. And the county's been doing this over there for a long time. Or, they don't have code enforcement. I think it's environmental protection or something like that. Code enforcement is one of the toughest jobs. I mean, these guys, and ladies. I don't know about the ladies. I understand it's ladies working for the city in code enforcement. I mean, they have to wear sidearms, because it can get ugly. But be patient, and I know the establishment, I don't know how to mellow it out other than make them pay, or, I don't know what the 24,000 is for. But I would like to sit down with your, with you, with both of you, Mr. Reynolds too, and find out a little more about what's happening in the inner structure of the city. So the citizens can make recommendations, and if Mr. Townsend's been working on that since he's been there, we're way behind, but we're catching up maybe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. First up for discussion here is Tourism Administration Convention Committee Appointment. Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, Mr. President, essentially what the mayor is requesting is the ability to appoint someone in his stead to be a member of the Tourism Administrative Convention Committee when he is not available.
Yes, Mr. Weiss.
I have a few questions. Actually, the memo, I think, is misdated. It's January 2011 that he took office. But I remember, this was one of the gray areas, when I sat as president of the council on assignments of council members to certain committees, certain organizations in our community. And I remember Mr. Vice President was quite upset with me on this issue, because I was not certain who, it was always the mayor, when the mayor was a member of council, and I offered that courtesy to Mayor Hayward, because of the type of committee that it was in our community. And I don't know how many he's attended, or what, you know, his interest is in it, but I, I'm concerned about a designee being appointed. I think that this council left him in place out of respect for Mayor Hayward. So I can't support a designee being put in place there, because there was some serious questions on council as to whether it should have been a council function or a mayoral function. So I don't know if that's been discussed further since this issue came up. If you could give me clarification on that, Mr. President.
It hasn't come up in, in my discussion. I don't know if Mr. Reynolds, yeah.
No, sir.
No.
It was before you were here. Has there been clarification, maybe from the Clerk's office, that we could get before this decision is made, on who should actually be sitting on that committee? If it's a council member or the mayor?
Well, as you stated, it's always been the mayor, but the mayor's always been a member of council, like the government. It's up to council.
So my concern is that, that if it's not certain who, but the mayor is not attending and sending a designee, that it, it probably should come back to council at that point, if it's not going to actually be the mayor.
Okay, Ms. Myers.
Yes, and I would not want to allow the mayor to appoint a designee to attend in his place. And I do believe that it's a council function, that the council should be appointing the person to attend that committee. And I would also like to suggest, I don't know right offhand who all is on it, I would like to see someone from either District One or District Two, the kind of uptown area, because we have a lot of hotels there. We're getting ready to have a new hotel there. So I think that we, you know, that we should have representation on that committee, because of all of the hotels that we have there, and the airport, and tourism coming in. So I would like to suggest that we might look at who is actually on there now, and if we have broad enough representation for our city to include, you know, the uptown area motels and so forth.
Well, you know, what I would, I would like to be able to do is, if you guys would permit me, is between now and Thursday night, is speak with Mr. Messer, from the legal position of, the mayor has the authority to do that, and to, you know, the, the politics of the issue. I'm quite comfortable going either way. I don't have a dog in the fight. But if there is going to be fight, I just want it to be something that, that's winnable and doesn't come out with everybody bloodied. It's something that we could all agree on. And so why don't we discuss this under old business on Thursday night?
That sounds good to me.
Okay. Ms. Dubuson.
I would just like to have some clarification. The TACC is a Committee of the Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center. Is that correct? This is not the TDC. So there are some specific membership requirements that have been established by the chamber. So I would really suggest that council look at that. It is very different than the TDC committee, so that we're not confusing, you know, which groups they are.
Mr. Reynolds, if you don't already know the answer to that, just for our discussion later, is, is just make sure that you're up on that.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any more on that issue? Financial report, Mr. Barker.
Bring the microphone over. Mr. Townsend says we can't hear you. Very self-talking, the man.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council. This is the first quarter report of fiscal year 2012. And to remind council, these financial reports are simply schedules. They're not the official audit report of the council or official statements of the council. They're simply comparing budget numbers to budget numbers and giving the council a report of that. The official statement and CAFR audit report will actually, for fiscal 11, be at the next council meeting. And we're still dealing with the issues of the downturn in the economy. The library, as it's moving forward, one of the issues that were brought up, that Mayor Hayward had told the libraries, if we had carryover dollars, we would come back to our funding level for books, which this council did approve, based on the mayor's recommendation in December, and that was additional $55,900 from the city of Pensacola. And as you know, as part of the 12 budget, the county funding level was reduced, and that was, of course, approved by the city council as we moved forward. Other issues that affected since the beginning budget, we had the fire union negotiations, and the funding for holidays were part of that, and payment was appropriated for that, and that amount of $411,000 throughout the year. And then the PTO payout that other employees, general employees had enjoyed in earlier years was approved as part of the contract, and that was $420,000. And then, of course, interest rates continue to be low, and I think most of you have heard that the Fed is keeping those down through 2014. In the general fund, the revenues have exceeded the budget, primarily one of the issues that we had, and we researched this, we received an additional $2.2 million from what we had anticipated, and that's simply a reflection of not necessarily early payments of individuals to the tax collector's office, but the tax collector released a payment in December that usually comes in January. Our franchise fees and utility taxes, as I reported early, or at the council meetings, are down and continue to be down. It's about 10.21%. The sales tax is down. Communication services tax is down. Municipal revenue sharing's up slightly. And then the transfer from Energy Services of Pensacola, we usually make that transfer of $8 million, half of that in the first quarter, and the other half in January, beginning of the second quarter. We were not able to do that this year due to the downturn that we experienced last year with ESP, but I am comfortable that the full $8 million transfer will occur by fiscal year end. And then, in looking at some of the schedules, you may notice some changes, and I'll try to point out a couple of the big changes. One, the annual audit that used to be reported in the finance budget is closing for fiscal 11 and beginning fiscal 12. Those costs are reflected in the council's budget. I think the charter makes it clear that the council does have the audit, and the auditors do report to council, although they work with the mayor and my office as management and staff, they do report to the council. And as I mentioned last time, the auditors will be here doing the fiscal 11 audit at the next meeting. And then the combination of human resources and civil service departments, I believe the mayor had sent an item out on that issue. And so if you're looking at your schedules, simply the expenses for civil service have been moved into the human resource department, and we recorded expenses through the end of November in the civil service department. The financial services department, if you look, the operating expenses look high. That's due to a carryover for the disparity study. That was an encumbrance carryover, so it appears that our expenses are quite high over last year. And then the general fund transfer to Stormwater Capital Project Fund is also a result of the early payment that we received that early also, so that appears high, although in both of those, we expect those to come within budget. In total, we, I'm expecting expenditures to be below budget, and in matter of fact, in the revenue shortfalls that I had mentioned earlier, I feel that during the first quarter, we've, we've covered all of those and expect to continue to do that. And that's mainly done through a selective hiring process that we have continued throughout the years. And the balances in the tree trust fund, the unencumbered balance is $680,000, and contributions and interest through the first quarter was $1,838, and expenses encumbrances In the park purchases fund, and I anticipate that, that all the funding, unless we get additional money in this year, that all the funding for the park purchases will end this year. The majority of that is going to the ADA projects approved by council. The unencumbered balance is about $38,000, with expenditures and encumbrances of $22,000 and interest income of $27. For our special revenue funds, the local option gasoline tax fund also was down about $12,500. I have not changed my projection on that revenue source. I think that, I want to see it the next few months. I think we may still come in on budget on that, and expenditures will not exceed budget for the fiscal year. On the West Florida Regional, West Florida Public Library, revenue and expenses were consistent with budget, and I had mentioned about Excanbe Accounting Funding being down 11 to 12, and the city making up the book, based on the mayor's recommendation, of $55,900. Stormwater utility fee, as I've mentioned, is up compared to last year. Expect to come in, or maybe a little bit above budget. And one was the timing issue. The next was the stormwater utility fee adjustment that was made and approved by council. It went from 5280 to 6843 per ESU. The state right-of-way maintenance is also reported in that fund, and expenditures are consistent with budget. The municipal golf course fund, expenditures exceed revenue by 5,600 before the general fund subsidy of $27,500. If you recall, council, that we're reducing the total subsidy to the municipal golf course by 10,000 a year, in hopes that at one point, there will be not a subsidy at all required of the golf course. Of course, they're just opening, reopening after improvements, and we're continuing to monitor their success out there. $34,300 over prior year first quarter revenues that we've seen this year increase is due to the surcharge in the mild winter. We've had additional players out there than in previous year. And the golf course renovations are complete, and the concessionaire has been out there, of course, since September 11th, is Dag Enterprise LLC.
How are they doing?
I would have to defer that question to Mr. Flaherty.
Okay, I'll talk to him. Why don't you just...
The inspection services fund, revenue exceeds expenditures by $76,100. Certainly want to give credit to the inspections department. It's been a long time since I could say that, and that there's no subsidy from the general fund. I do not anticipate it this year, and the majority of that reason is increase in the commercial activity. And they continue into this quarter looking positive also. Expenditures are consistent with budget. Roger Scott Tennis Center, the total revenues are below budget, but that's due to the annual memberships come due during the second quarter of the year. So we'll look at the six months. I anticipate it to be back on budget at that time. Wanted to note on the personal services, if you look at the line items compared to last year, we were paying the pro through a personal service line item. We now have the contract completed this fiscal year, and his, or, his contract is reported in the operating accounts. So there's a difference there, if you look between fiscal 11 and fiscal 12. And then expenditures will not exceed budget for this fiscal year. And then the concessionaire is out there, been hired. We have that agreement since June 2011, and we receive 10% of monthly net sales. Capital project fund, the local option sales tax is still down. Still watching that. I'm not lowering the projection at this point for the fiscal year end, to see what the summer months bring in. But as I have reported to council, that because of moving up the projects in order to get those going, that we will use pooled cash, and may have to do that. That has not occurred yet, but just to keep that in front of council, that that is the plan to do that, and that fund balance may be negative for the next couple of years. In total, I expect still the, the collections that were reflected in FY12 budget.
Are those the, is that the new, I think we reestimated the local option sales tax last year to say that we think we're going to be getting more, and now we're over optimistic last year. Is that what you're saying?
Well, we haven't seen it yet come in. And I still think it's going to come in. It's been very interesting. Last year, every month, I saw an increase from the previous year's collections in the sales tax, in local option sales tax, half cent in local option sales tax. This year, for the three collections that I've seen so far, they have all been down from last year. So I'm continuing to watch that, but this is measured off the new projections.
Okay, thank you.
And then the Stormwater Capital Project Fund, of course, the amount that we collect is transferred from the general fund into this fund. And as budget do that, that transfer was made and expenditures are within budget. The enterprise funds, the first is the gas utility fund. Expenses and encumbrances exceeded revenue, and this is due to lower gas cost and warmer winter. The fund transfer to the general fund I mentioned is half of what it was during the first quarter last year when you do your comparisons. And then the PGA calculation that was part of the new rate study, there's an additional 10 cent per CCF, which we have collected 434,500 of that. And that's matched up against the recoup or the shortfall in the reserve balance at the end of fiscal year 11 of $4 million. So you can see it's going to take a few years, hopefully not more than three years, to make that shortfall that we had that one year up. So when ESP goes down as much as it does, it takes a while to get that made up. We did actually have an operating reserve of $4,167,900, which is about seven, seven and a half percent of budgeted revenues. Your council policy says it should be at 15%. So we're continuing to watch that. And as councils aware, this year so far has not been cool weather. You've got February and March, from my experience, that if it turns off cold, will certainly help. I don't think it'll make it up. There is a provision in the rate code for the weather normalization feature, so there will be an increase in that because we have not had cold weather. But we still will not make budgeted revenues. We will not meet the reserve requirement of 15%, but we're working towards that. So we're continuing to watch ESP. But I, you know, with all that said, we will, I'm anticipating us still making the full transfer of $8 million to the general fund. And then the gas construction cost, if you recall, the gas utility fund, we had borrowed $5 million. 3.7 million will go towards the gas fund. And sanitation fund is 1.3 million for the CNG vehicles. So we're moving along with that process also. The sanitation fund revenues exceeded expenses and encumbrances by $145,600. Fund revenues were consistent with budget. Franchise fees are consistent too, but I just need to mention, when you look each year, it looks like we're always low in the first quarter. And that's because of accounting accrual reversals that we make from one year to the other. And then the compressed natural gas refuse trucks, we had budgeted fund balance versus a transfer. So on the next budget resolution, we'll make an adjustment for that. We will be reporting all the revenue coming into the gas fund instead of splitting it and doing a transfer from the gas fund to the sanitation fund.
On the first line up there, $145,600, is that a result of us forgiving the debt that they're no longer having to pay back to the city?
Well, certainly, if they had to pay it, it would reduce that number. But I think, as you're aware, that Mr. Moore has made great strides in trying to reduce expenses and landfill fee costs and sell some of our type things. But yes, sir, it would affect that number. But in comparison to last year, we forgave the loan in 10. So when you look at a comparison, yes, you may say, well, it is that. But from budget standpoint, it's because Mr. Moore's done a lot with trying to reduce the expenditure side of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
And then expenditures, expenses are consistent with budget. For the port, revenues exceeded expenses and encumbrances by $80,100. Revenue are below FY11 levels, if you look across your schedule there, by $133,600. And that's mainly due to some additional activity we had last year, last quarter, in property rentals and warfage. And expenses in total are added below budget. And the port lease payments, you asked me to report each year. This is one that the port may have gotten resolved. When I spoke to them, they were still working with that vendor, and they were four months behind. But they assured me that they were working on a schedule in order to get that back. So I was not able to get in contact with them today to see if they've actually got the terms of that worked out. But we will certainly be monitoring that along with the port and report to council where we are on that lease.
How much is that four months?
I don't know that I have that information, but I can get that for you, Mr. Townsend.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Parker, I was wondering, I had a question a constituent asked me the other day of what we get in rents for the large ships that are at the port monthly, the 1,200 that's down there at this time. Do you have any idea what offland, in...
Offshore.
Offshore inland pays us monthly approximately for those large vessels?
I don't monitor it by vessel, but I get with Mr. Mathis.
Yeah, I just wonder ballpark, because I had someone ask me those questions.
If I may, Mr. President, I can certainly have that available for council on Thursday night.
Okay, thank you.
Did I take care of you, Mr. ...
Yeah, thank you.
Then the airport fund, expenses and encumbrances exceed revenue and fund balance by 1.8 million. But we knew that. We knew this was going to happen. Last year, they, because of some refunding we did the prior year, they did not have a $1.9 million principal payment that they had to make. And they do have to make it this year. And by fiscal year end, I think they'll be fine. But for the first quarter, when you look, it threw them out of balance. And revenues are projected to meet expenses. Passioner traffic has decreased by 4% compared to the first quarter of 2011. And there are two main reasons, the airline modification of their schedules and types of aircraft. But looking forward, because of the additional lines that they have, they expect certainly to meet budget by the end of the year. And operating revenues are above fiscal year 11 by $12,000. And that's mainly to the air carrier landing fees, rental cars, and commercial property rentals. And then there was one significant decrease in miscellaneous revenues if you are comparing to FY11. And that was for airport reimbursement of $126,000. That did not occur this year. It was one-time thing last year. But there again, the airport, remember, the airline agreements assure that they can be adjusted, rates and charges can be adjusted if necessary, so that the airport ends up revenues meeting expenses on a cash-type basis. Then our internal service fund, the insurance retention fund, and the central services fund, the funds that provide services to the other departments, they're all consistent with budget and that their revenues equal their expenses. They charge out what their expenses are to the other departments within the city. Investment and debt schedules are attached for council's review. Again, the city investments are all low and anticipate to stay low based on what the Fed's trying to do with rates. And then this is sort of a review and a preview of the 2013 budget. But we began the budget at $50,600,000. And with the carryover items that council has approved this year, it's $52,449 in the general fund. And then the projected budget as we close out from this point where I think we'll be at the end of the year is $52,045. There are revenue decreases that have occurred that I've mentioned during the quarterly report. And of course, that'll change quarterly as we look. And the big difference in the personnel expense line item is just personnel expenses based on us reviewing the positions and that type of thing. Remember, the most important thing is keeping your expenditures within your budget. If you do that, your financial condition will remain pretty well as it is. And that's what we've been trying to do until the economy picks up. But then for the 2013 budget, you notice, looking at the $50,600,000 budget in 2012 and $48 million budget in '13, the big difference there is that line item that says transfer to tax and franchise fee debt service fund. That's going away. The debt will be gone as far as needing resources from the general fund. It's in the reserve fund, and we have the last payment on 10/1/2012, which is the first day of fiscal year '13. So you will have a, my projection is we'll have a drop in the budget at that time.
May I ask, why does the tree budget go down so much? Are we planning on spending all our tree money?
Well, no. The tree money is there. There have been concerns on council about spending so much of that money upfront and that type of thing and putting it in the budget. So that is what I think we'll take in in '13.
That's what we'll take in.
Probably about what we'll take in in '12. So if there are supplemental appropriations that we need to do, we will put that in in the tree.
But so if we don't spend any money this year on trees, just hypothetically, then it'll be, I think that's a 93, so it'll be $100,000. You'll add those two numbers. It's not decreasing to that number. That's just the additional funds.
No, that, right. We started with $80,000, okay? That we thought we would get. And with the carryovers, I think we're going to spend $93,000, okay? And next year's budget, starting at around $7,500, to keep with what we bring in. And if we need to spend more, then we'll bring that up. But just at this point in time, I want to try to keep revenues with the expenses, knowing there's a reserve out there if we want to pull from that in order to do it like we've been doing in the past. And with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council, if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Committee? Ms. Myers, did you have any questions?
No, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Townsend.
Just one question regarding, back when you were talking about the airport and indicated the aircraft or the equipment that they were using had a bearing, an impact on the income. Were you talking about smaller equipment or larger equipment?
Right. It was the issue that they went from larger planes to the smaller planes during the time. And all that was programmed. Remember, I'm reporting the results of what happened when you're comparing the two years. But in the FY12 budget, that was anticipated. So I'm doing a comparison between 11 and 12. And it's sort of, you know, you probably heard that during Melinda Crawford's presentation of FY12, and this is a reporting of that, of what actually happened.
Okay, so the equipment that US Air was bringing in here is holding something like 59 or passengers. Am I correct in that? And is that going to have an impact in terms of folks not utilizing because of the size that you know of the aircraft?
I think it's a supply and demand issue. And if the supply of customers that fly are out there, that they will bring in whatever size craft that we need.
Okay.
And if I may, Councilman Townsend, I think that some of the things that you've heard in the last couple of months in regards to increased air service here at Pensacola will make next year even look better. And also, there's a very good chance that not only did we keep Southwest Airlines here, or actually, I should say get Southwest since they bought Airtran, but there's every indication that we will actually have more flights from Southwest than we currently do Airtran.
Okay, thanks.
And if I may, with different destinations.
Thanks. Ms. Dugasan.
Yes, I was actually hoping that Councilman Spencer would have raised this for discussion. At one of our neighborhood meetings, Ms. Mack was there, and she reviewed with us the budget that she had looked at and reflected to us that the natural gas rate as currently being billed to customers, the fuel cost, which was supposed to have been a pass-through at fuel cost, is now being increased by $1 per 1,000 cubic feet. And so my question is, at what point did that ability to add a dollar per 1,000 cubic feet get approved by council? And then also, she pointed out a difference in the franchise fee of 6% for the city and 5% for the county. Is there any way that we can make that equal if that is truly the cost of having the franchise access? You know, why would it be cheaper for the county than for city residents? And I don't know, I mean, Mr. Spencer had said he would ask the questions of Mr. Barker, but I may have jumped the gun, but since he didn't raise his hand, I assumed he didn't have any questions.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The last question I will answer, the city has a franchise fee of 6%. The county, for years, did not have a franchise fee. And then they negotiated with Guff Power and had one for a while, then it went away. And then it came back, and they had settled on 5% as a revenue source that they would need from their utility. And then it was agreed upon that the utility would be treated the same. So when they made the agreement with Guff Power for the 5%, ESP had continued to pay and was paying the 5% before. So that, of course, all that revenue goes strictly to the county for their operations, whatever they determine. The 6% for the city is one that's set with all our utility companies, the ECUA, of course, the City Gas and Electric, they all pay the 6%. And many years ago, that was raised over time from 5% to 6%. As far as the gas pass-through as part of the rate study, in that rate study, if our reserve ever fell short, which it did, and we knew it was going to, then the 10 cent per CCF is added until that is brought back into align with council's policy of the 15%. So that's out there too. And also, I think that council needs to know that there are other things that all add into it, separate components. But when it's seen on the council's bill, like the weather normalization cost, the PGA, the reserve makeup of .10, all those are a component that goes into what shows on the bill is purchased gas cost. All the other components except the 10 cent per CCF were there for many years, at least since 2000. And then this rate study, knowing what the reserve was in order to make that up, knowing it wouldn't be made up in one year, that that was added with this rate study so we could get our reserves back up.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else?
Gary Sansing, 1517 East Jackson, Pensacola. Looks like there was a lot of lost revenue. And when I see signs that we're out in the city where we're spending from the budget in '13 and '14, this is two years ahead, we're spending money from the budget, two years ahead. Now, I don't look at the budget real closely. I just look at the big picture. In some ways, it's easy to follow. In some ways, we've been sort of misled. The way I look at it, the world's in a crisis, and I keep saying that over and over until we realize it. Unemployment, they're hiding numbers. I'm sure it's over 15, 20%. When people, you know, when they lose unemployment... When people, you know, when they lose unemployment insurance, they go off record. Where the heck do they go? Now, when they say we'll recover in a year or two, that's very, very, very optimistic. When you get to people that I've watched on the federal level talk about the budget, these are the people that have, Republicans and Democrats, who have been trying to fill us in to tell you what's happening. They are ignored. I mean, when I talk to some of the people, they say, "Well, you know, government don't want to scare the citizens." Well, how many people in this country are really citizens? That's another issue. And, you know, we've got to start these issues on a local level as to what's happening. And when I look at the way they cut California budget, I can't believe it. And we've got to be prepared for the next, I think it's going to go in for four, five, six years to recover what has been stowed on or misspent and unfunded pension plans and all kind of obligations that we are not being told about. Now, we've got to get someone who really studies the budget. I mean, I again mentioned Dr. Harper. There are people here within our own county that can enlighten us better. I mean, we do wonderful here, but if you ain't looking at the big picture, I mean, you aren't going to see. I mean, the federal government's not going to have money to pass along to the state, the county, and the city. It ain't there. Everything, as I keep saying, tighten our belts, help one another, or we, no matter what, we will get through it. When you listen to debates, the only good things that came out of it, or some of it wasn't good, but truthful, 40% of the homes in Florida are underwater. Now, when you compare our county to the rest of state, we're only a little bit pink, not red. One more thing, you know, it's funny. Now, when I turn around, I see citizens. Five years ago, you couldn't even get in here because of the developers. Now, how many of them are hurting? How many of our regional banks hurting because of what has happened within these rooms? And the county and the state allow uncontrolled growth that we will...
Gary, are you getting off target?
No, no, that's part of the budget, man. We will lose revenue because we'll have homes sitting vacant and commercial property. We must put that in perspective. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Next item is the Complete Streets presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, Councilwoman Pratt had requested this as a discussion item, and I've asked Ms. Sherri Morris to come up and kind of give an overview of where staff is with this to assist you as you continue to talk about this important issue. Ms. Morris.
Thank you, Council President, members of committee. I'll go through this briefly, and pardon my voice, it's cutting in and out today. Why are complete streets important to community? Basically, they're an important integral part of the livability of an overall community in that complete streets are designed with all users in mind, not just motorists, but also bicyclists, public transit vehicles and riders, pedestrians, and all people of all ages and abilities. A complete street by definition can include any or all of these, or typically all of these components: sidewalks, bike lanes, special bus lanes, public transportation stops, frequent and safe crossing opportunities, median islands to calm traffic, pedestrian signals, curb extensions, and also narrower travel lanes. In recent years, over recent decades, you've seen a trend where vehicle lanes get wider and wider at the expense of narrowing sidewalks. Complete streets try to bring back the sidewalk width to encourage pedestrian activity. Here's some visual representations of what complete streets look like. These are from Charlotte, North Carolina. They have developed an urban street design guideline document that creates this type of pedestrian environment and fosters complete streets that are welcoming to, as you can see, bicyclists and pedestrians with clearly designated crosswalks, street trees, wide sidewalks, bump outs for cars, and lanes for transit vehicles. In the most recent comprehensive plan update, the city did adopt some complete street language into our comprehensive plan. It's in the transportation element. These two policies that are contained in that section of the comp plan basically state, in the first policy, that the city will develop a typology of complete streets amenities and identify the most appropriate enhancements for the range of streets within the city. The typology that is referenced in this section could come as a land development code amendment where we would actually adopt language into the LDC specific to street design, or as the comp plan language illustrates, it could also be a standalone supplement to the land development code, a separate document as what they have adopted in Charlotte. The use of that, according to the comp plan language, would be to systematically plan public transportation upgrades and bicycle and pedestrian enhancements. The second policy states that the city will pursue more feasible complete street and intersection improvements along the corridors identified in adopted neighborhood and redevelopment plans in order to provide for not only aesthetics, but also accessibility and safety for pedestrians and bicycles and motorized vehicles. And in that section of the comp plan, it also states that the improvements may include traffic calming measures such as adequate lighting, shade trees, wider sidewalks, bike paths, street furniture, gateway treatments, directional signage, and area identity markers where feasible. And that would be in those areas where we have adopted redevelopment or neighborhood plans. Just to give you a point of reference, this is just, the red line is, of course, the city limits. Those blue and green lines running throughout it are the state and county maintained roadways. That being said, there are, there has been a recent movement at the state and federal level to embrace the concept of complete streets. So that is something that I think many MPOs nationwide are working with to adopt complete street policies, and that's something that could be pursued as well. But that's where we are currently. We've put language into the city's comprehensive plan, and, you know, we can move forward with additional information as needed.
I just wanted to point out to council, something, or what that would be, in the county road, in reality, they have ownership of it over the points of maintenance.
If you have any questions.
Yes, well, I've been coming down to council for years, talking about the sidewalks in downtown, in our downtown area. They're horrible. And a lot of them are in violation of the ADA. I've seen curb cuts put, actually put in sidewalks that are in violation of the ADA and the Federal Highway Administration regulations. Do we have a plan to address sidewalk accessibility and improvements in the downtown area?
Councilwoman Myers, we have our sidewalk program that is administered annually, and that program includes the ongoing recognition that some of these intersections need to be brought up to ADA standards with ramps that are accessible. That's something that I believe a good part of the list last year was devoted to, and that list will be coming back before this board for consideration in the coming months for the fiscal year 2013 list.
Well, let me expand just a little further and go over to the Urban Advisory Committee. Is this something that that advisory committee will be looking at, is addressing the sidewalks in the downtown area?
That is...
And our comprehensive plan, implementing our comprehensive plan in the downtown area?
I believe that I'm being asked to answer that. You know, given the fact that the mission of the committee as outlined includes items such as ensuring that opportunities created and resources expended benefit all, creating a walkable community, I would think that it would be easy to amend that to read accessible community by increasing mixed-use density. And in that, meaning if I don't have the transportation, such as a vehicle, but am limited in my mobility to assisted walkers or wheelchairs, I do want to have a higher density, mixed-use neighborhood so that my travel distance would be lessened. I mean, as I go down the list, Councilwoman Myers, I see basically an overlay that would include that. I mean, as a community says it wants to be more competitive, certainly competitive communities are going to recognize accessibility to all is an issue, most importantly, as baby boomers regrettably age.
I like the term that Ms. Morris used, creating an environment, an infrastructure for persons of all abilities. Because that's more inclusive than just addressing the issue of walkability.
Right.
So I hope that's something that the advisory group will also look at.
Anyone else? Mr. Duncan Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had asked for this on the agenda because we have, in our goals, Mr. Gerald's mentioned, one of the things was trying to address bicycles and walking in our community. We talked this fall about complete streets and what are our sidewalk policies. We had the Sustainability 350, something like that, I might have mixed it up, come to us, and we all said, "We like it, we like it." And then we don't do much. And I'm hoping that this council will shift from being a reactive council to being a proactive council. And so I, in looking at this, I was hoping that we could move towards actually creating an ordinance or a policy on this, you know, move from the comprehensive plan to actual action items. I tried my hand at combining some ordinances that other cities have done, and I will apologize, I forgot to count myself, so, Mr. Reynolds, you won't get one. I'll give you mine, because I want to keep it near me. Anyway, I don't pretend to be a lawyer. I will, I will take any changes or whatever that anyone suggests, but I thought that having a written document as a target to start us thinking about actually taking action rather than having, discussing it more and more, I think would be a good step. The basic thing that this does, it's got, I stole a lot of words from other people, so it has a lot of words, but basically, the idea of it is to create a network plan. What, where do we want to start targeting? Funds are limited, but what is our ideal in terms of complete streets in this community? And these are things that I've talked with Mr. Garza about in the past, you know, could we do bike boulevards or other things? But when I talked to Mr. Garza, he always said, "I don't have enough staff to start doing all of this." And so I was proposing that we get together a citizens committee to start reviewing this, and I would hope it would include bicyclists and others, and have them spend a bit of time reviewing it, and in the interim, have any street projects go to the planning board. That's a quick summary of what this says, but, and I know you guys just got it, so I don't expect you to have any comments necessarily, but I hope that we can use this as a launching point. I know Mr. Messer has said to me, "The council never gives me ordinances to prepare," so now you can start being the council's attorney, too. But I hope that this can start us towards actually taking a proactive approach as opposed to sitting around and discussing it again.
Mr. Spencer.
I'm glad Councilwoman Pratt has articulated this in written form, and I want to remind her, just as I was reminded earlier, I'm happy that this council has not waited until this document is in place to go ahead and vote for some of the, basically, the improvements that are listed here, such as the Main Street Improvement Project with the wide, much wider sidewalks than what had initially been contemplated. And I want to remind everyone that one of the items, and perhaps it's mentioned here, but again, in our climate, I don't, it doesn't matter how wide a sidewalk is or perhaps what its surface is, but if it doesn't have shade, that's part of the package, given our hot summer months, then we are not getting the biggest bang for the buck. But certainly, I applaud the delivery of this. And again, I do think that the recent representation by, I believe that was Susan Feathers and Christian Wagley, that group has offered their services and has asked to be included in a regularly scheduled, or they're asking us to help our staff establish a timeline so that they can regularly participate. Most of those individuals, many of them I know personally, will be strong supporters of this and I think help also in the further refinement of this. But it's a great, it's a great start, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Yeah, Ms. Myers.
Yes, I just really want to commend you for doing this. This really is a great start. And I'm glad to see someone on council bring forward the notion that we can accomplish some of the things we want to accomplish like this through the legislative body. I like the idea of setting up a complete street committee of citizens, and so I'm going to be taking a look at this and reading it over, but I really want to commend you, this is definitely the direction I would like to see us go. And having citizen involvement, I think we have, is critical, to have a wide range of citizens involved in this. I would like to see if we set up such a committee, obviously persons who are very familiar with the Americans with Disabilities Act as part of that. So I just thank, thank you, thank you, thank you for bringing this up and putting it in a format that we can start looking at and hopefully adopt.
Thank you. Anybody else? Does that conclude everything? Yes.
I just want to ask, does anyone have any feelings on what the next steps might be if, you know, if we can have Mr. Messer review it and bring it back in an upcoming meeting for us to throw stones at it?
I would like to make a motion that we task our city attorney with looking at this in terms of the legal aspects of it as to form and content, of course, and that it be placed on the agenda of the next committee of the House.
Second. Have we got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Next item, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Myers had requested that we have a discussion item on the agenda in regards to the Environmental Advisory Board. And so that's why this is here. And if I could just give an update as to where we are with the Environmental Advisory Board. First of all, it had been mentioned earlier this evening in regards to a comment from Councilwoman Pratt that there was an issue in regards to staff. There was an issue in regards to staff, but it wasn't about the number of staff available. Essentially, it was that the city no longer had the technical expertise for this particular body. body. Because at some point before my time, all of six months ago, the organization had determined that it would contract with the county for those services. In the last several months, the county and the city have been working towards finding a staffing resolution for the EAB. We have done that at this point. The county administrator was very gracious, and even though it wasn't in the actual contract, but agreed to have environmental staff from the county staff the EAB under that contract. Last week, we had drafted a scope of work that specifically talks about the technical expertise that the county will have available for the EAB. And as Councilwoman Myers and I have been working through the last week or so and discussing this issue, I believe that we have a resolution in regards to how we're going to have staff support in regards to ensuring that we have a room available and those kinds of issues. Now, ultimately, it will be up to the EAB to ensure that they appoint somebody that's responsible for taking minutes and handling those issues. But otherwise, you know, from internally the staff's perspective, I believe that we now have this taken care of. There may be some wrinkles. I think that we can get work through those, however, as we put this in play, but that's where we are with it from my perspective. But I have, I am available for to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Ms. Myers?
May I? Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I have spoken to Mr. Reynolds a number of times, and also to Keith Wilkins at the county, and they will have a person there at all of the meetings, per the agreement we have with them. The issue is, you know, setting up the room, having someone from city staff get out the press release which will notice the meetings. I talked with Bob Niger this morning, and he would like to have a meeting on the 22nd of this month if, and I also talked to Elaine Major, and the room downstairs is available. I understand that she will be the person who would be getting out the notice to the press and doing those administrative things, making sure that the proper notices go out. I understand that all of the members' terms expire on March the 1st, and so we will be taking nominations for all of those positions. But the communication I had with Mr. Niger, who by the way is out of town, is why he couldn't be here tonight, is that he would like to have a meeting this month on the 22nd. And in the meantime, I believe that nomination forms went out to all of the members of the council. So, that's where we are. The last meeting of the Environmental Advisory Board, they considered a number of things, a number of things the city council asked them to do. Well, one of the things was to give us an update on the status of Carpenter Creek. So, that's an issue that they need to take up again. But the minutes reflect where they left off, and I guess that's where they'll pick up. But anyway, I just think it's really important that we get this board up and running again, and so that we can deal with some of the environmental issues, such as Carpenter Creek and some of the superfund issues, side issues. So, if it's possible that we can get the room, get the notices out, I will ask, if it's okay with you, I'll ask Mr. Niger to give you a call, and so that you can, he can coordinate that with you or Elaine Major.
Yeah, absolutely, Councilwoman Myers. I can address that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. If this does happen, I would like to add one thing to that list, and that is, recently there were some discussions about Bayview Park, and a master plan for Bayview Park, and these are just very, very early in those discussions, had a town meeting about it, actually, and one of the issues that came up was the reduction of hard surfaces, non-pervious surfaces in Bayview Park, which is very important to me. I would like if this board does meet, that that be on the agenda for, I would like hard recommendations from the EAB on the reduction of non-pervious surfaces at Bayview Park. I can't remember if you were at that meeting, but that was a topic that's near and dear to me. As we know, non-pervious surfaces, when storm water hits those, they end up in our bayou. And there seem to be some mixed feelings about that, but I would love to have that on the agenda for a hard recommendation of how we can reduce hard surfaces, non-pervious surfaces in Bayview Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Absolutely, Councilman Johnson. And what I'll do, if I may, is I will, when I talk to the chair, I will actually put him in contact with you so you can give him a little more background than I'm probably able to do on that issue.
Gracias, amigo.
Okay. Anybody from the public on this issue? Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Hyer, 2101 Sinekaway. I'd like to offer any assistance that I can give as a citizen. We've had some discussions earlier in the day about the importance of citizen input. This is one area where I think citizen input is critical. We have a great number of people in this community with skills and interest in the environmental area. This board is critically important. I've been talking to people about it for months. I am willing to provide whatever services that I can provide that are needed to the board and help continue its work. I'm glad that Councilman Johnson brought up the Bayview Park impermeable surface. That's an important issue. I'm a user of Bayview Park. I take my dog out there. I won't let him swim in the water there because we all know that the runoff from that water is not clean. The runoff into the bayou is not clean. There are frequent alerts issued as to the bacterial levels in the water at Bayview Park, and that also impacts the Carpenter Creek watershed. That this area does need to be addressed. I'm very interested in helping to address that, and I hope we can move forward on this as soon as possible.
Well, Ms. Hyer, just, you know, pay close attention, because it looks like we're probably going to have a meeting on the 22nd.
Yes.
And so, I'd encourage you to attend that. And you also heard that we've got room to open up for nominations. So, you can either nominate yourself for a position on there, or ask one or more council members to do that.
Okay. Well, I would be interested in that.
Okay. But just make sure that, because we're going to have shift gears after here, just give us a phone call or an email or something like that so that we can get your information and put it down on our nomination form.
I've already spoken to Councilwoman Myers about this.
Okay.
And told her that I would be interested.
Oh, okay. Good, good. Mr. Johnson?
And I would support you on that committee. The other thing, just to follow up, and you reminded me of something that, one thing that's a big concern to many on really both sides of this issue is the boat parking that's at Bayview Park, and we need to bring that to the EAB's attention. I observe that parking lot every day, and very, very, very seldom do I see that parking lot full. And I have real concerns about that parking lot being on that bayou that close to the water. I think it's not highest and best use. I think for three or four days a year for that parking lot to be full, and most of the time, 360 days of the year, to see three and four and five cars there is just unacceptable. And I would like the EAB to take a very hard look at the boat parking area there and think of a way that we can reduce that. And that, of course, would help with, helping with the water quality in Bay Harbor, because we would have less storm runoff into the bayou. So, I'd like to have that on the agenda for when the EAB does meet. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hyer. Anyone else? Okay. Council staff first now.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be short and sweet from staff's perspective.
Yeah.
Staff continues to be prepared to enact and help you, assist you in any manner that you direct us to in regards to this issue. And with that, I'll leave it to your discussion.
I'd like to ask, Mr. Spencer, you're still on the review board for the applicants. Where does your committee stand on that?
Actually, President Hall, I thought, I recall that that subject was brought up, and then when, perhaps it was your first meeting as president, you respectfully asked us
I did.
To hold off.
I still thought maybe you had reviewed.
I didn't disobey your order.
Would having something from your committee be next committee meeting for, just for discussion on, you know, Dr. Pratt is...
Do we have applicants?
No, but, I mean, I think it would be, I certainly volunteer to restart the engines and convene as one of the committee members. Mr. Townsend, Councilman Townsend, Councilman Gerald's.
Mr. Townsend would like to say something.
Yeah. In response to what I heard your question, yes, we do. I have a stack of, I think about 20 applications that Yume Resil's person passed on to me, but after the directions of the president,
That's my...
I dropped them quick because obedience is one of my major traits. So, I do have them, and I guess if we can get some advice from Yume Resil's director there, we could probably have something back for consideration after we look at them.
I'm trying to recover here. Yes, Ms. Loise?
Do you need a motion to reconvene the committee? I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Yes, Dr. Brown?
I just, was Mr. Chair going to explain what we have in terms of applicants? Just, I can't remember the timeline and when we advertised and what we have.
Yes, I'll be glad to...
I don't think you're on...
To go back over it with you again. We advertised on November the 8th, and we closed the job on November the 15th. We received 14 resumes for council executive at that time. I sent all the resumes to you by email to review and asked for you to pick your top three, but I didn't hear from anyone. So, then we came to the committee of the whole, and that's when President Hall said, "Let's hold off on it." So, we've been waiting until y'all give us further direction.
Are people, when people, I guess, it hasn't been that long, that the people who applied are probably still available and interested, I guess?
No.
I don't know, but we would send, we would make contact to make sure that they were still interested.
Okay. And I guess I have one final point is, one of my concerns has been, in having been part of this process, I took the liberty last summer to talk to a few people who had applied and then withdrew. And I think that it is, our structure is very confusing, and that whoever takes this job is in a very awkward position of serving two masters. And one of the options that I think we should give serious consideration to is contracting it out. The mayor's privatized, the attorney's office, his chief of staff, we could privatize our council executive, and that would remove this person from being a council employee to making them a contract, just in the sense that the audit is a contract supervised by the council. And I, as we go on with this, I think that that is an option that we might want to consider. If we can find a great qualified person who's willing to put themselves in this unusual position, great. Thanks.
I understand. Mr. Spencer?
I hope that, and when I say this, I think Councilman Townsend will give the largest sigh, the most audible sigh, but I hope that when the committee members reconvene, we've had one year pass since the new form of government has been implemented. I personally have different, a different perspective than I did eight months ago, and I hope that as the committee meets, that we'll be, I will ask my fellow committee members to be open-minded and consider a change in that model from even just one person. Certainly, I'm open to all other ideas, and I think, you know, Councilwoman Pratt, an idea of contract employee is certainly worth visiting. But my point is, I intend to go into the process with a little more open mind.
Well, I just want to issue my mea culpa on this one. I had best intentions of discussing this with the mayor personally, despite the assertion that some of us are on the inner circle of the mayor. That's certainly not the case with me. After about a month, quite frankly, I just let it, I let it slip. The first discussion I've had on this was with Mr. Reynolds today. You know, and I had my own suggestion of one thing that we might be able to do, but Dr. Pratt's suggestion sounds very doable and somewhat attractive, and especially since not going to get any pushback from this, it looks like from this side over here on it, then that makes it even more attractive. I'd just briefly tell you what I discussed with Mr. Reynolds, and it would not alleviate that awkward position that you're talking about there, but as, just kind of adopt the CRA model, is that if we found an individual within City Hall now to be the council executive, that whatever portion of time that they're serving council is charged to our budget, and that if they needed extra persons there, that we could do the EPS en route for their support staff. But I'm not wedded to that. That was just one of the ideas that I'd had before, but whatever council's wish is on that. Dr. Wu, you have any ideas? And Ms. Myers?
Yes, I would prefer to have someone who is a contracted employee rather than an employee of the city, because I do think that it would be problematic for that person or persons. We had, I think, discussed at our last discussion, I think we actually agreed that we needed more than one person. But that person or persons could be contracted employees. I mean, we could contract with an employment company. I mean, like, you know, there are a lot of them out there. I don't want to mention any by name. But, I mean, that's something that I think is doable. And I don't remember getting the email with the resumes that you referenced.
I found it.
Maybe that's why you did, I mean, I don't know if the other council members recall getting an email back in November.
Not only do I not recall getting the email, when I specifically put in a request to see the resumes, I didn't receive that either.
So, maybe that's why you didn't get any comments. I don't know, but...
Well, maybe so. It was sent out on November the 17th, so there could have been a reason. I mean, I don't know what happened, but...
Okay. Could you resend that email? Because I just don't recall receiving it.
Yes, Dr. Wu?
I didn't speak earlier, so upon reflection, maybe there was a couple of comments I wanted to make. Number one is, I think the dilemma we found ourselves in is, who does this person work for? And I believe the new charter is pretty clear from what I heard the attorney interpret... And I believe the new charter is pretty clear from what I heard the attorney interpret it, and that was that the mayor has the ability to hire all staff, period. And unless that changes, I don't see how you can get around it. If you say that the mayor has the ability to hire all staff, how do we get around that? Regardless of how you employ that person, are you in violation of what the charter specifies? I'm not trying to throw oil in the ointment. All I'm trying to say is, I want to make sure whatever we do is legal. Thank you.
Well, thank you. One of the, I think, potential stumbling blocks, and perhaps not with this council executive, perhaps not with this mayor, but that if that's the model that this council and other councils use, if there's a council executive there that all of a sudden becomes unacceptable to the administration, well, okay, there's a contract, and they're paid on that contract, but when it comes to having an office with telephones and fax machines and computers and computer support, is that that belongs to the mayor. And so we could have a council executive without a place to come into work. So, but that's, I don't think that would happen with whoever it is we hire initially. I don't think that'd happen with Mayor Hayward, so I'm not trying to, you know, start a fight, but it is a consideration.
Dr. Pratt.
And I would say that partially that's one of the advantages of looking at it as a contracting out with someone, if we hired Mr. Messer as our staff person, which we, that would be too crazy, but he does have an office. Well, for many reasons, no. He does have an office, and he does have his own phones, so you could do that. I mean, it's similar. The ECUA hires Brad Odom to do it, and I don't believe he has any office in ECUA facilities. He works from his own office, attends meetings. And so that's one way that you could avoid it. And then with Dr. Wu's question, if Mr. Messer could address that, my understanding is the charter addresses employees, but does not have any prohibitions on the council entering into contracts.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If the question is this, from a pure legal standpoint, does the city council have the power to contract its own executive director? If that's the question, the answer is yes. Now, if the question is, does the administration have to provide funding, office space logistics for that particular individual, that's a more speculative question.
When you say funding, what do you mean? Do they, does this, would it be that the council could enter in a contract, but the mayor could refuse to pay it? Is that what you're saying, or?
I don't know where the funding would come from, because that's not my area. I mean, I'd be glad to talk to...
Well, we have funding appropriated in the budget.
Right, as I understand it, each council member has a certain amount of money...
We also had $250,000 appropriated for council staff.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that the mayor could refuse to pay the voucher when it's presented to Mr. Barker. I'm suggesting that although you can, I believe, hire an individual that's not subject to the mayor's supervision, how you pay for that person is on you, so to speak, on the council. That person is, would not be a regular paid employee of the city in the same sense that we have, quote, "normal paid employees."
Right, but it would be someone more like yourself.
Sure.
In that you're a contract employee.
Probably wouldn't be someone just like...
Well, they wouldn't be as amazingly awesome or something like that.
Thank you.
So I think we can remove that impediment. I think council can do that if they desire.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. President, if I can make a suggestion, and I hope nobody's offended by this, but, you know, it's my sincere wish that council would have their staff. And once we had that staff in place, I would like to think that we would be able to work through these issues. I can't imagine, frankly, some of the scenarios that are being drawn up here. You know, I think that the important thing is, is we get council staff, and you allow me the opportunity to interact with that staff. I will certainly do everything I can to make their job successful. So, you know, maybe if we can get away from the law school problems where we have all these other issues coming in, I think if we just focus on getting the staff in here, you know, we're going to do everything we can to make sure they're successful.
Dr. Wu?
First of all, I'll start off by saying I'm certainly glad you're the person here for that transition, because I personally have the utmost confidence in you and your ability to do so. My only concern is, I think there's a lot of issues I think we need to clarify prior to bringing somebody in, because that's happened on the last round. Somebody sat in front of me and said, "Well, if I take this job, do you fire me or the mayor fire me?" And I did not know the answer to that. And I'm saying, before we bring somebody in and say, "We want to hire you," I think there's going to be some questions they're going to want to know. And I'm not trying to be obstructionist. All I'm saying is, it's easy to say, you know, bring them in and then decide, but if that person's looking at you, say, "Are you going to fire me or is the mayor going to fire me?" And I can't answer that. I think it puts us in an awkward position. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
You have a motion on the floor, please.
Absolutely.
If you never had voted on it, that we...
Yes, now restate the motions, please.
I don't know who made the motion.
I think it got voted on. We just went clammy.
All right, Mr. Spencer?
I don't know if this requires an additional motion, but I would like to recommend that Mr. Reynolds definitely be, sit in with us and participate in that upcoming committee meeting.
Would you be willing to do that if the committee were so inclined?
I am always willing to assist, sir.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Consent agenda items. All items approved unanimously in the committee of the whole. That includes the three from mayor communications and actions in the...
Number one wasn't unanimous.
Which one was?
Dag.
Okay, items two, three, and four were voted non-unanimately. Yes?
Just clarification on consent agenda. I mean, we just had a couple other motions. Do those go on the consent agenda? I can't remember how we do things.
Because they don't require a vote Thursday night?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay. So items two, three, and four.
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That passes unanimously. Ms. Dewes is absent for the vote. Okay. The presentation by Attorney Samuel Bearman regarding entering a private lawsuit, that was pulled. He had an individual from the University of West Florida that wanted to be here for that. Going to put the attorney on the spot here just a little bit. He and I have talked about this a couple of times. Mr. Bearman wants us to join in a lawsuit. I'm with him. And just give us the 60-second version of that.
The 60-second version is that Mr. Bearman wants to form a consortium of other law firms in order to file a lawsuit to hopefully force the cleanup of Baidahar. Now, I would rather him explain the issues with that, which I'm sure he'll do. And his proposal was that the city of Pensacola join in the lawsuit, and I'm sure he's going to be prepared to tell us why that should be done. Before he makes his presentation, I also want to disclose, and this is something that the council president and I didn't discuss, because I didn't know it would go this far, but I want everyone to understand that Mr. Bearman and I have had financial dealings before. He's referred cases to me to try on his behalf. I would hope he would continue to do that, and our families socialize together. I don't think that makes anything I say biased in favor of him, but, you know, you never know. So I want you to know that, that when we talk about Mr. Bearman, he and I have a long history together.
Okay, good. So we've got that up for next committee, then, I would guess, whenever he's available.
Yes, Mr. President, we'll discuss it with Mr. Bearman and have him come back in when...
Okay, for rescheduling, yes, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I'll make it quick. I know everybody's trying to get out of here, but when we do have that discussion, I just want to see, of course, we all want Baidahar clean, but I'm not sure that if he's going to sue and have a lawsuit, I'm not sure if the bayou gets, if they're successful, it's going to be cleaned up whether we join or not. So I'd like to ask him those type of questions. Other questions I think that we need to make sure that we ask him is, how do we overcome statutes of limitations? How do we overcome DEP's approval of Conoco's plan? Also, Northwest Florida Water Management's approval? Those type of questions. I've got supporters that have problems with us joining this suit, and I'm hearing them. And no one wants Baidahar cleaned up more than I do, but I'm just not sure of the upside for the city of Pensacola to get involved in this lawsuit. I've just not, I'm trying to wrap my arms around it, and I'm just not sure. If they're successful, the bayou will be clean, and I'm just, I've just really got real serious, serious concerns about us joining this lawsuit. So I just want to make those public right now before we have this presentation, but I've got a lot of questions, and we'll have more when that presentation's made. Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Well, I think Councilman Johnson has hit the issues on the head, if you will. What value is it to the city to be a part of this lawsuit? The lawsuit will move forward regardless of, from what I understand, whether or not the city is a participant. So, but Mr. Johnson, I think that you, you know, as I look at it from my perspective, and is not as good an attorney as the city attorney, but I can tell you that those are concerns that, from an administrative standpoint, that I have.
Yeah, and following up on that, I was a part of the class action suit against Conoco a number of years ago and received a check, and I believe I signed a waiver, or I believe it's called a waiver, if that correct, Mr. Messer, to where I would never sue them again. And I believe there was maybe hundreds of people involved in that lawsuit, so I'm not sure who the plaintiffs would be. And again, you know, my concerns are, you know, the city of Pensacola would be liable for cost incurred in this lawsuit. You know, where does that, you know, what's the number on that? A million dollars, $10 million? I don't think it's going to be an easy road. Again, there's no one that supports cleaning up Baidahar more than I do, but I just don't see the upside of the city getting involved in it at this time. If they are successful without the city's involvement, then we will enjoy the cleaning up of Baidahar.
Let's just save that for when Mr. Bearman...
No worries, but I just wanted to make those statements publicly. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Winneke. Winneke.
Winneke.
Winneke. Yes.
Call me whatever you'd like, Mr. President, I'm a member of council.
Steve. All right, okay.
I promise to make this quick. I know everybody's had a trying evening. It's basically what we've done in the past, just an overview for council of fiscal year 2011, what we've done through code enforcement efforts. Start off by saying, I was contacted by the mayor shortly after he took office, and he scheduled a ride with me. We rode the city for several hours in the area. He expressed his concerns with what he wants with the city, you know, what type of direction he wanted to take. I expressed what we needed, what I thought would be a good way to do it, and basically I said, "If we get better tools, you'll get a better product." The mayor supplied that direction. He's been very forthright on what he wants with the city, why it wants to be cleaned up, and it comes down to the backing we've received for council. We've put many ordinances in front of you this past year, more than any other year I've been affiliated with the city. And without council's backing, none of this can take place, and you need to realize that, because I speak with other agencies, both locally and throughout the state, and they're amazed at the backing we get from elected officials. It's one thing to talk a game, but it's another thing, you know, to put the money where your mouth is. And y'all take a lot of flak, you know, when you pass aggressive ordinances and such, but you are to be commended for that. Same with the mayor. The outcome has been an extremely successful year in the field. We've had one of the busiest years on record. We set a record number of cases in many several categories. Our officers are all excellent officers. They're all veteran police officers from the police department that I happen to borrow from Chief Simmons. The lot crew, the lot crews basically are unsung people. You know, they abated over 600 properties last year, and those properties, if they're not abated, you're going to have 600 properties in the city that are overgrown and blighted. You know, they don't get a lot of recognition, but they play a critical role in code enforcement. In the office, you know, we continued a record number of years. We were able to process the cases. We were able to enact all the ordinances that council passed, and it's been successful. I'm moving right along. It has a positive impact on the city of Pensacola. You know, pictures speak louder than words. You know, this property here, before and after photos sat for years until we were able to pass the abatement ordinance, or council agreed to pass it for us. You know, another property, years, it's in foreclosure. You know, we didn't have the means to abate it until we passed the ordinance that y'all passed. Another one, you know, just tons of garbage, debris, personal property in the backyard, in foreclosure. The individual, you know, no longer live there. You know, we couldn't have done this without y'all, and all these properties have a negative effect to the neighborhoods and the community at large. I mean, you wouldn't want to live next to this. You know, we're one of the few agencies in the state that have been aggressive with this abatement with foreclosures, and it's paying off. Special magistrate, that's another key role, I would say. It was a smooth transition. Council agreed to implement Mr. Ray, who was the code enforcement attorney, for an interim special magistrate. It's been a smooth transition because of that. Our hearings are much more expedient. Bottom line, you have one person listening to a case versus an entire board. Compliance time is shortened, because we have multiple hearings per month now. We can give higher volume of cases than we are. Last, in 2010, we heard, the code enforcement board heard roughly 200 cases. We've already heard of 118 in four months this year. Fine and lien reduction, this is always a point of contention, and being on the prosecutorial role, I guess, for the city on these, I'd like to remind council, because there's a lot of times, everyone has a story, everyone has, you know, regrets, everybody, but in my decades with the city, I've yet to have a property owner come before the board and now the magistrate to go, "You know, my property was in violation for years. It shouldn't have been. I cleaned it up. It hasn't been in violation for years. You know, can I get some, you know, some help here? You know, reduce it? I don't plan, I want to live here." The only time people ever come to the special magistrate or the old code enforcement board or before council is when it comes time to sell that property and make a profit. So I'd just like y'all to keep that in mind. Now, the fine and lien reductions, again, the code enforcement board was a civilian board, and, you know, they, the heartstrings were pulled a lot of times, and they were very lenient on forgiving fines, and it became an issue with city council, and y'all didn't agree with a lot of the stuff. With the new special magistrate, I think Councilman Gerald said it best at a council meeting when it was brought up for his first fine and lien reduction. He's an attorney. He takes a lot of time in these cases. He doesn't, a lot of times, he doesn't rule on them right away. He takes a few days to look at all the circumstances. I'm not necessarily in agreement with him, but he takes a lot of time and effort in this, and I think Councilman Gerald's recognized that and stated such. I don't think you're going to find a person that looks better into this. It's not a rubber stamp anymore. He hasn't forgiven a lot of fines and liens. You know, some of them, he's made a recommendation to council, but I just wanted to point those out to you, you know, just to give you a little bit of relief, because I know, you know, you have to weigh it as well, but with the special magistrate in place, that type of situation's getting a lot more attention paid to it. What's on the horizon? We're, you know, we continue to work with individual citizens and neighborhood organizations on partnerships to improve the city. You know, we only have so much staff, and like I tell individual citizens and neighborhood association, you know, you know, pick up the phone, call us, we'll be there that day. You can remain anonymous if you want, but you are the eyes and ears of your community, and we need that input. It's critical. Continue to review municipal ordinances. I have a stack on my desk I'm going through, because I know council sees changes that can be made for the better. The mayor's office does, Mr. Reynolds, and I continue to do such. Consider the implementation of procedures that help ensure commercial haulers are in compliance with city codes as it relates to the payment of franchise fees. We monitor franchise haulers, and one of the things we do is we run an audit based on... We monitor franchise haulers and one of the things we do is we run an audit basically and we see some issues that we'll probably be addressing with council on future dates. And then, critical, as you saw earlier tonight with Mr. Messer, move forward with procedural reviews of longstanding code violation cases in an effort to collect on the unpaid fines through new avenues, including but not limited to foreclosure. You know, council gets a lot of heat, we get a lot of heat. You know, you have properties out there that have been in violation for years. They have $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 worth of liens on them. Well, it's time for the city to do something with these properties. I think Councilman Gerald's has said that before, Councilman Townsend, Councilman, all the council members, and we're doing such. And I, I think it will come to a turning point where people realize, you know, the city's not playing anymore with these old properties. We're going to either have to pay up or face punitive measures and I think it'll be good. And I know it sounds like a bully on the block thing, but you have to realize, one thing I want to point out, our staff, we try everything we can to help people comply with ordinance. You know, we don't go out there and, you know, hit grandma up with a, with a citation. You know, if they need assistance, if they're low income, if they're disabled, we reach out, we go above and beyond. We reach out to church organizations, we reach out to Clean and Green, we give extensions. As long as people are trying to comply with city ordinance, we're going to work with them. But it comes at a point in time where, you know, a lot of people aren't the best stewards of the community and they snub their nose at the city, they snub their nose at us and punitive measures have to be taken. And, you know, people that have thousands of dollars of fines on their property, there's a reason. They haven't been good stewards of their community. And in closing, I said I'd make it brief. I hope that's good.
Great job, sir. Mr. Gerald's.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Warnicki?
Yes, sir.
And I know that there are, I've done some reading and research on abandoned cemeteries in the state of Florida and certainly we are not excluded from that list of cities that are having a problem with abandoned cemeteries. But will the magistrate be able to enforce the rules as far as the primary one on A and Gonzales? And as I understand it, that denomination of religion does have a maintenance fund that they, but can we attack them? Because we shouldn't be, yeah, attack, I mean attack. We shouldn't be any more lenient with them than anyone else. Obviously, the residents out there can't do anything about it, but if somebody is responsible, then their feet needs to be held to the fire so that they take care of their responsibilities and clean the cemetery up and maintain it in an ongoing fashion.
I'm in total agreement. That has been a problem with the city, with us for years now. We are looking at every avenue possible. I've met with Mr. Messer on this issue, met with Mr. Reynolds. In fact, I'm meeting with the state agency this coming Wednesday, not to, not this Wednesday, but the 15th, I believe. We're going to drive out to that cemetery. We're exploring every avenue possible in regards to that cemetery and lawsuits haven't been ruled out. We don't know if we can go there. There's legalities, but we are, I hope to have a definitive answer for the mayor and for city council March, no later than the first of March, on what we can do, what direction we can take because I, I'm in total agreement with you, Councilman. It's a blight to the area, it's a blight to the area residents, but because it's a cemetery, because there's, there's, there's greater issues involved as far as ownership and the property itself, it's, it's a real tough one, but I, it's one we are working on and I hope to have an answer by March 1 for council.
And if you will add to your list, the one on, I believe it's Cross?
Gillimard and Cross, yes, sir.
No, there's one on Cross and Eighth Avenue, between Eighth and Ninth on Cross. Most of the grave have completely sunk into the ground, but there are about three, maybe four, that are still standing and you can tell that it is, it was at one time a cemetery. But there's a nice piece of property there and I don't know what you do with, if you can development on top of what's there or if the remains have to be removed, just what would, would happen.
And those are, and those are all issues with cemeteries that are, that are cumbersome, but we are working on it. We, we want to be able to address these properties.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Mr. Reynolds, anything on items 13 and 14 or just open for questions?
Nothing on 13 and 14, sir, but we do have item 12.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
And item 12, again, Councilman Pratt had requested a, an update on the Escambia Treating Site progress report, or excuse me, on Escambia Treating Site. You know, one of the reasons that the mayor's office hadn't come to brief council on this particular issue is because there really hasn't been any resolution yet. However, Cynthia Williams is here to tell you exactly where we are at this point. I will say, both the mayor and I were in Tallahassee a week ago, meeting with governor's staff on this issue and we're continuing to work at, with that being said, Ms. Williams.
Perfect timing. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of city council. I do have an update for you on the city's status in regards to acquiring the former neighborhood parcels which surround the former Escambia Treating Company site, as well as the timelines for the anticipated property transfer from the federal government to the state and then to the city. But first, I do think it will be helpful to get a quick briefing on the property layout. Thank you. It's going to make it easier to follow the city's progress and goals for redeveloping this site into an industrial park and hopefully you can see this fairly well from where you're sitting. This map shows the subject parcels owned by the federal government as well as the former Escambia Treating Company parcels. You can see the thicker black line is actually the city-county boundary line. And so the northern city boundary line, let's see if I can, no, it runs just above the Rosewood Terrace neighborhood parcel and then goes south down Palafox to the Herman and Pearl Street neighborhood and jogs out around this site. But what I want you to know, looking at this map, is the properties in red are the former neighborhood parcels. Those were the ones that were acquired by the federal government as part of the Superfund Relocation Project. These four parcels total approximately 72 acres and this is the property that the city would ultimately accept title to from the state. The properties that you're looking at in yellow comprise the former Escambia Treating Company site. And you'll see the larger parcel outlined in yellow on the western portion is now actually owned by Escambia County. That's about 15 acres. That's a front right there on Palafox Street. And the county commission just recently passed a resolution authorizing the county to transfer this particular property to the city. The two other parcels in yellow are in private ownership. However, we do understand that they are also in a tax delinquent status and they will likely follow the same eschewement process as the larger parcel that went back to the county ownership. So this timeline for this, this to occur, it's somewhat questionable, but what I do hear, it's at least two years out for those to go through that same eschewement process. But we do ultimately expect those to be conveyed to the city, just as we saw this larger parcel was conveyed to the city from the county. But so at this time, the parcels outlined in yellow are not part of the land that's being transferred from the federal government to the state. Now, in regards to the current status of this site for the city's involvement, basically the EPA is looking for positive actions from the city to facilitate the property transfer. Both the EPA and the state have a very strong desire for this property to come under single ownership. And positive actions that the city is taking include conducting an environmental and legal risk assessment of the site, which we are very close to completing and we anticipate having the environmental site assessments wrapped up this month. We are merely waiting for reports to be finalized, but we do know from the properties that required Phase II environmental site assessments, that those reports concluded that no further investigations were required. So that was good news for the city. Other positive actions the city is taking to facilitate the property transfer include negotiating with the state on the terms of the operation and maintenance agreement for this site. We do hope to reach an agreement on this phase of the project this month as well. The city is also working on a memorandum of understanding between the city and the state, which will outline a number of conditions for accepting title to the property. So at this point, we are basically in a negotiation phase and I think everybody realizes that the city needs to make sure at the end of the day, we still have a viable redevelopment opportunity for a commerce park here. You know, another big step we have in the transfer process is, that needs to occur prior to the transfer, is finalizing the use restrictions for this property. And these are currently being drafted by EPA. And EPA stated recently that they anticipate needing more time to finalize these restrictions. However, once they are finalized, this will mean that EPA has actually satisfied a significant part of their contract with the state. And this is critical because once EPA has satisfied their contract with the state, then the transfer process would technically be able to begin. So and the state's goal is to then immediately transfer the site to the city in what would, in an ideal world, be a seamless process. I will add, though, at, that this is the first time in history that a superfund site will be transferred from the federal government to the state of Florida. And it has been a very complicated process. So we had hoped that we might really be beginning this process in early spring and we are nearing early spring. And I wonder if it's not going to be a little more delays again. I will say, because there is not a rulebook for the state to do this, they are moving with an abundance of caution as they proceed, which has made anticipating certain timelines very difficult. It has required a tremendous amount of patience from all parties involved, but I think all parties, meaning the EPA, the state, and the city, do work together and all feel a sense of urgency to create a commerce park that is then creating jobs. And I'm just going to touch on this slide, just, just very quickly. This is, just summarizes the, the use restrictions that, that will be in EPA's language. This is no surprise, I think, to anyone here, says, "The property shall be used solely for commercial, industrial, or manufacturing purposes. Any type of residential uses on this property will be expressly prohibited." I, I think that that's to be expected. These restrictions will be firm when they are transferred by EPA to the state. And it's also our understanding that EPA will uniformly place these restrictions on all the parcels. And that means that's including those that are currently owned by the county as well as those parcels that are privately held. We will see that place over all of them. Now, really, in conclusion, I wanted to go over the sequence of events from this point forward. First, the city has already issued a letter of intent to the state, which formalized the city's intent to take title to the property and to redevelop the site as an industrial park. Secondly, the city would begin annexing the federally owned parcels that are located in the county. And subsequent to annexation of the federal properties, the city would be able to begin rezoning those former neighborhood parcels to industrial. And finally, the city would ultimately commission a consulting firm to prepare a marketing and development plan for the site, is one option. Or if there is interest in the property from a preferred anchor tenant, then the city could pursue development plans directly with that anchor tenant. So these are both options for the city. I use this last slide, I think it's, it's been around for a long time and you're probably very familiar with this. When Escambia County did a conceptual plan, I believe that was in partnership with the city, this was the plan that came out of this. Obviously, this would go through an entirely new planning process to make sure that we would be attracting the right tenants for the park. You can see by looking at that, that we need to automatically revisit the infrastructure components of the site since this plan shows the stormwater ponds blocking access to the rail, but the master planning process, a new master planning process will open up those items for discussion again. And that concludes my presentation and I can go back to the, the map if that's the more useful map for discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are a number of parcels that are outside the city that you're saying are going to be transferred from the state to the city. Is that the normal procedure?
It, it is. Because those are all part of the federal superfund relocation, they feel like to further their remedy, I mean, they, the EPA and the state, you need to have these under single ownership because they do come with use restrictions, construction restrictions, and they will be industrial parcels adjacent, or they're in the triangle anyway, so it's not part of the commerce park, but adjacent to it, so that you have these operating under a single land development code.
But would it make just as much sense for it to all go to the county?
Well, the county passed a resolution, is my understanding, that the city's in the lead seat, that the county had passed a resolution saying that it made sense for the city to be, to be the lead on this project and that that was, I was under the impression that had been done some time ago.
Okay, because I guess I'm, I'm, I guess my chemistry background, I know those things aren't gone and I just, I, I'm very concerned about what are the risks to the city in owning these superfund sites?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's, and it's why that environmental and legal risk assessment that's underway is so very important. And in order to achieve the maximum liability protection under the circle law, it was imperative that the city go through its all appropriate inquiry and hit all the marks that EPA required to do that. And I know the city obtained Louis Longman Walker as their legal expertise to deal with the liability aspect of this, of this project, of this, and to make sure that the city receives the full liability available to them under the law.
And, and then, I guess you mentioned operation and maintenance responsibilities. I've sort of become aware that there's not much booming in the world right now and I'm foreseeing us having a lot more grass to mow when we acquire this, much less having to mow it with, you know, respirators on or whatever is necessary to, to work on that site for the time being. What, what sort of costs are we looking at?
Well, and that's exactly what we're in the middle of negotiating with the state. And, and even the state with the EPA as far as what responsibilities, does it make sense to stay with the EPA since they obviously have an interest in the life of the cap of this, on this property? And then what makes sense to stay with the state? And talking with those parties, they will tell us that this is very similar to the O and M that goes with the closed landfill site. And, you know, what, the larger questions that we have so that we can get a handle on the cost as the frequency of testing that needs to incur, the frequency of the inspections that need to incur at this site to make sure that erosion controls are in place and that the grass is being mowed and maintained and so forth. And there's a lot of back and forth as we decide where that, you know, where that makes sense, which party has better eyes on this. And so it's definitely an obligation and a responsibility to do this.
And, but, but the cost would be on the city or would the governor, federal?
It's going to be shared.
Step in for maintenance until we can get private ownership?
Well, and, and we would like to have that come out of our O and M. The state's view of this is that the value of this land is certainly more than worthwhile the city's, that what the city is getting in return for this is 10 times the cost that the city will face in mowing the grass and inspecting the site or if they hired, outsourced this, obviously, a consulting firm that to do this, that this annual cost would become more and more minimal as the site was developed. And there is a very strong interest in this site because of the existing infrastructure. CSX has been out on site with potential developers who have said this will be a very successful railhead facility. There's a 12-inch water main existing along Palafox. I mean, the, the infrastructure has gotten people's attention. And even the developers that we have dealt with and they've been confidential, they have been very sophisticated in dealing with redeveloped superfund sites and brownfield sites. So even their attorneys and engineers that come to the table understand the design... and engineers that come to the table understand the design constrictions and, and I think that's gonna be the, the groups that we'll, we'll see approaching us and that we'll also be targeting.
And I think it's important to understand that, that, you know, this really is a, it's location, location, location. You are, you are, you are two miles from an airport, five miles from a port, you, you've got the railhead right there. You have, you have a major highway two miles away or, I forget what it is, but the, the bottom line is, is that this is one of those places that does have it all and there is a lot of interest in this property.
Okay. 'Cause I guess also, it, I guess ultimately it is different than the Trillium property that we had to spend the money to clean up the twenty million portion of the, the Maritime Park. We aren't gonna spend anything to clean this up. It's, it's pristine, except not really.
Right. It has a record, it has a record of decision that's been finalized by EPA, which puts it into the, I guess, the debate over the cleanup target level. So it was cleaned up to a commercial standard.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Liz Watkins, 2019 Augusta Avenue. Thank you for admitting as a scientist, I have a lot of respect for you that it is still contaminated. I appreciate that. I have been following this project since it started and I just want to make sure that I heard correctly, 'cause I wasn't sure, Ms. Williams, the two parcels in yellow to the west are privately owned?
That's true.
Have they always been privately owned?
No. My understanding is that when the EPA was initially involved in this with Escambia County, that those parcels inadvertently landed on the county's surplus property list. There was, and I don't know, there's no blame, there was some oversight somewhere that I think shocked everyone and so all three of those in yellow went to a surplus property list, which then went to an auction and people actually showed up at the auction and bought them.
You said three or two?
Actually, all three of these that are in yellow, it's just that the one, the larger one now has, has gone through the achievement process and gone back to the county. They, they've all fell into a tax delinquent status and they're following a process and unfortunately, that was the only way for those to maneuver, unless someone was, you know, really to try and negotiate to acquire those directly with the private owners, which we've explored a little bit. It's just not produced a response from the owners.
Can you tell me who those owners are or do I need to look it up myself?
You know, I used to know their names so well and I know they are on the tax rolls and I think I actually, they're, it's easy to locate.
Okay.
I think Mr. Alvin Boston is one owner and I'm not sure. And the other one is SCS. It's a, it's an LLC.
Okay.
I think out of South Florida, that, and I think both of these entities tend to go and purchase super fund parcels, 'cause they used to have a plan to sell them back and get large amounts of money. Not happening.
And, and you said it's not happening in this case?
Right. That won't be, to my knowledge, EPA does not, will not be buying those back from the owners. They will.
Oh, EPA usually buys them back. But they, but they can sell them to individuals correctly? Correct? If these people want to sell this land to individuals right now, if I wanted to go buy one of these, I could go buy one?
Yeah, they'd have to, they'd have to come out of their tax delinquent status and that part I don't know, but they've already fallen into this, to this delinquent status phase with the county, so I don't think that means they are, that makes it more complicated, but I, but I would not want to probably speak to that too much about a private citizen's ability to purchase these, these, these super fund sites that are privately owned.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I mean, delinquent, you just, you know, if I paid their delinquent taxes, I could, you know, buy it. Um, when did it, what year did this happen?
This may be five, four years ago.
You're kidding. I was at the shovel, I have it on tape, was that five years ago and you're telling me private citizens opened, owned it then?
No, I would have to confirm on the tax rolls when private citizens actually purchase those from the county's surplus property list.
Okay. Um, so if I want more information on this, do I see you or the county? Do I see Keith or who do I see?
Um, I could provide you with the, the names of the owners, but I would think since it's a county process that you'd probably want to talk to Keith Wilkins.
Okay. Were you guys aware of this? That private individuals own these parcels? Do you find that odd? No, no, no response. Okay, I find it very odd. I'm shocked.
Well, I, I think.
It may get more odd with the identities.
I, I think that you need to understand that there are always speculators that look to, having worked at a county, several counties in, in the past, there are always speculators that, that specifically are at these sales and their whole, their whole role is to buy it at pennies and then somehow look to, to, to sell them elsewhere. And in this particular case, when we're dealing with super fund sites, their whole goal is to get the, the EPA to buy it from them. You know, so they've got titles somehow and now they want to come and say, hey, listen, this is a super fund site. The EPA needs to buy it.
How did it end up on the surplus?
Well, man, we can't really answer that. That's not really the city's, the city's thing to answer, that's really a county issue.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the county, okay. Okay. All right, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. I just have a quick question. Jenny Spanos, 506 Coil Street. My understanding was that, and, you know, with the EAB, it may, may be different now, but there is no environmental staff in the city, so would they even be, I mean, do, do you have the knowledge or the, the ability to manage a site like this? I mean, it's a super fund site. It's really.
And we would do, we would continue to commission that expertise through a private consulting firm, just as we have with Louis Longman Walker, who brought both the legal and environmental expertise, which is really unique to a super fund site like this. We would continue to, to do that.
My question is, would the city be a better choice or the county, since the county already has staff in place?
Well, I, I think that's an excellent question and, and, you know, frankly, one of the reasons that this is a city initiative at, at this point is because the mayor came in and recognized the value of this property. The county, from my understanding, hadn't really addressed the thought process of what to do with it and so the mayor moved forward and then had the county agree to give the city the lead with the expectation that it would be developed. But, you know, at, at the beginning, that's, that's, that's a very good question. You know, is it a city or a county? It's a city initiative at this point because we've moved forward with the, with the, the concept to make it happen.
And I think, again, our inter-local agreement with the Escambia County, since we do share that environmental expertise with the Escambia County, that agreement provides us another opportunity to work with the county as we look through our O and M responsibilities for this site.
Okay. Thank you so much. You're informative, eye-opening. All right. Committee of the whole agenda request, I think we've already got two. Do any, any more? No? Okay, we're adjourned.